Good evening. My name is Kevin Rigstad. I'm the chairman of the Goffstown zoning board of adjustment. Welcome to this month's meeting. The Goffstown zoning board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and three alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Derek Horn for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and intends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on the application to receive testimony from applicants, butters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You are welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Derek Horn at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within 30 days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, we'll have introduced the members. Derek Horn's staff.
Ed Loopy, a member.
Gail LeBruck, a member. Kathy Hooton, a member. Judy Leclair, alternate.
All right. Thank you, everyone. So with that, we're going to go to the first item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes from September 7th. Any motions, comments?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
I have one item for correction. On page 19, paragraph eight, the last sentence of that three-sentence paragraph should end with a question mark, because without that question mark, it totally changes it. So it should state, "It's not his responsibility to look at 3.11 to see what it's closest to?" Instead of a statement that it's not his responsibility, it's a question, because I was asking the ...
Okay.
Do you want me to repeat it?
No.
Okay. Welcome, Joanne.
Hello. Sorry.
We just started, so we're approving the minutes. I think we had a first by Kathy and a second by Ed. And with that, we'll no other comments, we'll go for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Five, zero, zero.
You abstain?
Yep, four.
Okay. Move four, zero, one. So the first item on the agenda tonight, we're continuing a public hearing, and I did get the email, Derek, was continued from the September 7th meeting where Brookfield Investment Group Incorporated applicant was seeking a special exception and a variance to allow excavation of approximately six to eight feet of material from two adjacent properties located on Norman Road, which is map five, lot 61-1, and Wallace Road, map five, lot 95-1. The applicant was seeking a special exception authorized by section 3.11.i.4 of the zoning ordinance to allow the excavation on lot 61-1, which is located in an agricultural district and permitted by a special exception. The applicant was seeking a variance from section 3.11.i.4 of the zoning ordinance because lot 95-1 is located in a residential one district where excavation is not permitted. The property located on Wallace Road, map five, lot 95-1, is in the residential one district and is owned by Brookfield Investment Group. The property located on Norman Road, map five, lot 61-1, is in the agricultural district and is owned by Norman Road LLC. We voted that the application did not have regional impact. We had continued it last month, and we received today an email from the applicant requesting their application to be withdrawn. It says, "Hi, Derek, please advise, is he be at tonight's meeting? Brookfield wishes to withdraw its application." I apologize for short notice. Signed, Ed Monte. And that was the person that you've been corresponding with on this application?
Yes.
So with that, do we need to formally vote that withdraw it, or is it just automatically withdrawn?
I would say it'd be proper to vote to deny without prejudice.
Okay. All right.
I will abstain from that vote.
Okay.
I agree with that. I make a motion that we deny the application without prejudice.
Okay. And for this vote, I will have you, Judy. She can vote as well. But Gail's abstaining.
Oh, that's right. I'm so sorry.
Yeah. So you can vote to agree or not. So any discussion on this withdrawal of this application? Then we have a motion on the floor to withdraw it without prejudice? Or deny without prejudice?
Deny without prejudice.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain or against? Five, zero, zero. Five, zero, one.
No.
Oh, you don't vote.
Five, zero, zero.
Five, zero, zero.
I'm recused.
You're recused, not abstaining.
Right.
Okay. Great. So the second application is continued also from the September 7th, 2010, meeting. Christopher P. Tyler, applicant, is seeking a variance to allow the placement of a shed that will be set back two feet from the side property line and three feet from the rear property line, whereas section 5.1 of the Goffstown zoning ordinance requires a 10-foot setback from side and rear property lines. The property is located at 16 Upton Lane, which is map 36, lot 62, in a residential one district. We had voted at the September meeting at a vote of five, zero, zero, that this application does not have regional impact. We heard from the applicant and butters and interested parties. We left the public hearing open for additional information that we requested. And I think we have all five members of the board here, no issues on that. The applicant had sent to Derek today, and we have in front of us copies of shed dimensions, lot plans, elevations, et cetera. Are we ready to hear from the applicant? Mr. Tyler, are you here? Would you like to come forward? So what are you presenting to us this evening? What did you have?
I had to go to the state to get some layouts for the septic in the backyard to represent what the spacing is for the leach field and the septic tank. And the old septic tank is not in the drawing right where it is, if you look at that, signed by the state at the top of that document.
There, and which page are your handouts? We have four pages here.
It reflects the document that came last from Derek. The photocopy to everybody.
This one. Yeah, that's it. This one. Anybody got this? So tell us again what this is.
This is the overview of the backyard for the lot layout for the backyard's septic leach field. And the length of the leach field exactly equals three-quarters of the backyard. When we had the leach field replaced last year, it was replaced as an in-kind, so it runs the same length of the backyard that the old one did. Just before the brick walkway, or halfway before the brick walkway to the left of the house, and three-quarters of the way of the backyard, right before the old septic tank that's in the ground, that's left behind. And Wayne from Final Choice Construction is the one that did it. And he told me that when they usually do that, they just leave the old one there. So they just dig another hole and put a new one in and then extend the rest of it out. So most of my backyard is grounds for a leach field and a septic tank in the rear.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not familiar with how to read one of these for the septic. So you have a drawing in the middle of the yard where there's a line that says 101.25. Is that an elevation?
Yeah. Do you have this document right here?
Yes. That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
The first circle around the rectangular box is ...
Yeah, that's the perimeter of the whole bedding for the leach field, the Elgin leach field. That's the whole perimeter.
Okay. So the solid line is the perimeter of the bedding.
Yeah. And then the dotted line around that is where the excess sand and all the extra layout of the way the septic field was designed by Wayne, well, redone by Wayne himself.
And so you're saying to us that elevation of 99.25 feet line is the edge of the septic field?
That's the slope down that goes into the brick wall behind it, or the stone wall behind it.
The dotted line that that's sitting on top of, the 99.25, that line, is that the edge of the septic field?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
So when you say majority of your backyard is covered by what?
It's just about a foot mound that's raised in the rear on the backyard of dirt, because we have a pump-up system. There's a chamber box at the end of the, at the end of the tank that sticks out of the ground for a wired box, outside wiring, which goes into a D-box that splits out to the Elgin system.
All right. Any other questions?
Is the shed already there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And there was a problem discovering it or something?
It did, he did not receive a permit to construct it, but when he came in for a permit, as we discovered that didn't meet the 10-foot side and rear setbacks, so he's requesting a variance.
So the application said ...
And it's larger than the one that was there? There was a shed that was there before?
Kathy?
And it's larger?
Not the application, but the report from Derek says two feet from the side, but this drawing says four feet.
Right. I took a remeasurement again. Yeah.
Prior to this, it was some of those aluminum sheds?
It was a galvanized shed from Sears. Nothing, nothing from ...
What is the dotted, on the right side of that drawing from the state, this dotted mark that says 97 feet? What does this dot ...
That's the actual end of the slope that comes off of the house that drops down from the level of the property at the edge of the house. It drops down six to eight inches. And where it drops, where you see that 97 feet mark?
Yeah.
The beginning closer to the street level where it says Upton Lane?
Yeah.
That boundary line is supposedly that line. And they say that 97 feet on the straight line on the right side of the dotted line, that's supposed to be the actual boundary line. However, when I talked to Judy at the state, she says it's at scale. But when you walk out and measure it with a tape, unfortunately, the edge of the house and the boundary line don't measure correctly. So I don't know if it's a misnomer drawn out, or whether or not it was just made as the edge of the house isn't quite as far from the property line where it should be. So in other words, I think when they drew the house in the drawing, I think they left off 10 feet. Because when you go measure it, it's not the same.
Where would the 10 feet be left off?
See where it says 97?
Yeah.
On the dotted line?
Yeah.
About halfway up.
Is that why the last page of your handout shows the house closer to the side than ...
Yeah, it sure does. Because they had to make up for the difference of the drawing being actually the size of what it's supposed to be versus what they have it just for septic purposes.
On that same picture, what is the distance between the den and the far, the closest wall to the shed?
Forty feet.
From your den to the, and I'm talking this, you think that's ...
I'm sorry. I thought you meant the wall in the back.
From here to here.
That's, yeah, that's like 33, 32 feet.
I'm talking, what I'm looking at is the last picture, and I'm looking at the distance between the den and the shed.
Okay.
You said about 33 feet?
I'm saying, yeah, let's put it this way. The last measurement that I had ...
This is three feet.
Yeah, that is the edge of the boundary line.
Back wall of the den to the front wall of the shed? Front, side of the shed?
Side of the shed to the back of the den.
Right.
That was 36 feet, I'm sorry. That wasn't 33 feet, it was 36 feet. It was 40, 41 feet from the stone wall to the edge of the house.
Okay. So this ...
I thought perchance you had those previous drawings that I had made up.
I forgot from my last month's package, and that's ...
Just right here.
I have that helpful.
He had indicated, he didn't have a distance from the den, he had it from the house, it was about 30 feet.
I have an angle. Okay. What do you want to do still?
So we ... Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I do.
Okay.
On the drawing from the state, from the stone wall to the gravel-filled area of the leach field, which is designated as the dotted line that says 99.25?
Okay. Yeah.
How much, how much is there? How much footage goes from the stone wall to that point?
It's very short. It's like two feet. It's really, really short. You walk in the back, it's all filled in now with dirt, but if you threw a shovel down there, you'd get right to sand.
And the distance between the side of your house, which is the right-hand, if I look at this, it's the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Over to the part that says 97 feet? What do you think that distance is, even though it might be shown incorrectly on the state drawing?
I have that one down. I walked the property the other day. On the second drawing, or the third drawing, where it says backyard elevation, there's a note on the back that says, "From one pine tree on the right-hand side to the other is approximately 19 feet from center to the property line."
19 feet?
About 19 feet from the backyard where the propping line exists by the V tree, the V pine tree, to the main, to the edge of the house or the center of the pine tree, they're right in line. So it's about 19 feet from the corner or from the edge of that line where at the property to the edge of the house.
What was it in your decision-making that eliminated the other side of the property for the shed to be put?
On the original state document, if you look at the top where the dotted line is, that dotted line slope, that drops all the way to the stone wall. So if I can point you out to this one right here?
Yeah.
The document, okay. So from where the house is, and you walk to the backyard, and it slopes down a full foot from the top of the elevation where the septic is, down all the way to the second tree where there's a V, which is just a huge oak tree. So it slopes down in, you know, at an even rate to the point where if you put something there, you'd have to have an excavator come in and clean it up. And the tree sticks out right in front of the stone wall, which enables less room for a box to go in, the tree would have to be taken down. Or else it would stick out 10 more feet to the right-hand side of the yard.
Is it my understanding that this shed does not have a foundation?
No, it does not have a foundation.
It's on ...
It's on cinder blocks.
Cinder blocks.
Yeah.
What would prohibit it from moving over onto the outer, outer areas of the leach field, which are gravel?
I'm not sure which one you're talking about. Point to me on the drawing.
Well, it seems, well, the issue that I hear?
Yeah.
Is one of setback.
Mm-hmm.
So what would prohibit you from moving this shed closer towards ...
10 foot out?
10 foot out.
Well, there's a minor inconvenience that covers the total entranceway through the backyard to the, to the exit of the other part of the land in the woods. It's the minor inconvenience, but the major inconvenience, if I bring it out, let's see, four feet minus 10, if I bring it out?
Six feet?
Six feet. It's going to go right over the edges of the septic layout, leach field pipes.
Which really not supposed to have a structure on your ...
No, no structure, no driving, no nothing over leach field pipes.
Trying to piece together a map.
I have a question on this drawing.
Mm-hmm.
How much of this is to scale?
The lady at state, Joanne, said it is to scale, because when she measured the length of the house with the drawings up to the bedding of the leach field, as far as the scale of the leach field is correct, but she didn't say anything about the house being to scale.
All right. On this drawing?
Yeah.
Where is this tree that you've got on the last drawing of the handout that we got today? On the, where would that, where would the location be here? Because it's not showing the trees on the state drawing, which it should.
Right.
But it's not.
Yeah. The, if you point to this document right here, this is one of the documents that I gave you guys, this drawing.
Yeah.
If you walk the backyard, and where the D-box is, right just beside the electrical box that sticks out of the ground?
Yeah.
That is, from that point on, is 10 feet to the center of the tree. So that tree ...
From the D-box to the tree?
No, from the electrical box.
From the electrical box?
The electrical box is 10 feet, plus or minus a few inches.
Now, that tree is that pine tree?
Yeah.
Is on the back property line against the wall?
It's right on the property line.
It's right on the property line.
Yeah.
It's pretty close. And you're saying it's 10 feet?
So which means if you were at the edge of the house, and you were standing at the edge of the house in the backyard?
Yeah.
And you look straight, you'd look at the pine tree.
It would be right about here, then, is what you're seeing on the drawing?
Right to the edge of the house square. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that drawing is not right.
Yeah, it's not quite to scale.
Yeah.
Where are you pointing, Ed?
It looks like that tree should be right about here.
Will this help the aerial?
Yeah, I've got it here, but it's hard to tell where on that aerial. I think I can see it. All right. Now, you've got, in the aerial photo that's here, it looks like there's a fence coming off the back corner of the house?
Yeah, there is a fence.
Straight back to the wall?
That's correct. Right. It was there, but we had to take it down to have the leach field reconstructed. So it was there.
And if I'm looking at this right, the property line goes from the telephone pole, which is in the foreground of that photograph, straight back?
Straight back.
To the stone wall at the back.
To the stone wall, right. And intercepts the V tree, the oak tree that's on one of these, the backyard elevation drawing?
Mm-hmm.
Not the pine tree, because the pine tree's directly in back, if you can see it right there in the drawing, directly in back of my house.
All right. And you're saying that the leach bed, which is the elevation 99.25, comes even with the back, with that back corner of the house? Or is it ...
It's sloped down. In other words, it's a very ...
I realize it's sloped down. What I'm asking is, is the, is this edge of this leach bed, the 99.25 elevation, which is the base of the bed?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it in line with the back of the house? Is that what you're saying? Or is it as shown on the drawing?
It's ...
Does it only come about two-thirds of the way down the house?
It's shown on the drawing, two-thirds of the way down the back of the house.
Two-thirds of the way. What precludes putting the shed here, then?
Because there's only two feet left over between the backyard where the shed would sit?
But it doesn't look like that.
Where the tree is.
If you've got two-thirds of the house, if the leach bed comes to the two-thirds of the house line here?
Right.
And your property line is out here someplace, the math, your math isn't right. You should have, what's the, what's the back run of the house? What's the length of the back run of the house?
This to here.
I haven't taken a measurement of it.
So you don't know how long your house is, or how wide it is, I should say?
No, I haven't taken a measurement of it, I'm sorry.
Wouldn't that be in the assessor's thing?
It might be, yeah.
What the size of the house is? Which I don't know. That would be in last ...
I don't want you to ...
I don't have it written.
The rear of the house is 54 feet, but that does not include the den off the side.
Okay. So the rear of the house is 54 feet?
Okay, I see it. Yeah, 54 feet. So if the bed comes, even if you do a quick math and call it two-thirds, you're looking at 35 feet, which leaves you 15 feet left over between here and the back corner of the house. And then you've got from this side of the house to the property line, what's that, what's that distance?
Well, between the edge of the tree, the pine tree?
No, I'm talking the backside of the house to the property line.
Right. It's still about 19 feet, because the center of the ...
So you've got 19 and 15, so you've got 30 feet to put a shed in.
Yeah.
And if your shed dimensions are 12 by, uh, hang on. That's state. Shed dimensions old, shed dimensions new, you're looking at 12 by 9. 30 leaves you 14 feet to play with, right?
Roughly. But that doesn't take into account the bottom floor where it's sloped from the property line to the house.
If you're on cinder blocks, you can, you can level a shed with the amount of cinder blocks you're using. Or you can come off the ground and, in a run of 10, run of 12 feet, you've got a 112 pitch, that's not much at all. You can, you can block up, you can block a floor up on a 1 and 12 run with a cinder block or two, right?
You'd have to break us into block to get it to be even.
You might, but I'm saying you could still, you could still level a shed on a 112 pitch. That's not that bad. You can still get your setbacks in that back corner of the yard.
Any other questions? So based on what Mr. Loopy is talking about, you're not quite sure if it would fit into that area where the tree is, if there's enough space, if that leaves you the 10-foot to the back, you know, the property line setbacks, if you're sitting on top of it, you're not quite sure. You're pretty comfortable with where the, I'll let you answer that question before I ask that.
If you, with the previous drawing that Derek had, with the 41 feet that's measured from the stone wall to the edge of the house, if I put ... if I put the shed back, whether it's kitty-corner or just square to the back, that leaves only five or six, maybe eight feet left over from the corner of the house to the edge of the shed. Depending on which way you position it. If you position it with the back towards the neighbor to the right, or the back towards the woods.
Okay. You're pretty comfortable with where the edge of your leach field is by standing on the ground?
Yep.
Okay, so you're able to get a good picture of where everything is then?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you. Uh, the public hearing is still open, so we'll ask if there's any butters, or anybody else supporting the applicant first? All right, any butters who'd like to speak? Please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Stark.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members.
So we, we do understand that we are, still have your testimony from last month as well, so...
Yes, thank you, and I, I won't be repeating that. But I, I did, I had obtained this, and I believe this is the, is this the, the plan in fact that you've been looking at?
Yeah, yes.
I just, I wasn't sure when he was, when, when Mr. Tyler was referring to ninety-seven feet, which ninety-seven feet he was referring to. But this, this curve line here, that's a topo line. The, the straight line below it that says ninety-seven feet, that's a boundary line. You can see above, uh, on the, on the left-hand side, you'll see a ninety-nine foot. That's a, that's the, the next
Elevation.
topo line. So that, and then you'll notice that, that the, that Mr. Tyler made reference to the ninety-nine point two five on the dotted line. That is a topo indicator. And you'll see that, um, as well as the, the circle inside that, the one oh one point two five, that's again a, an elevation put on by the, the surveyor. And you'll see that on the right-hand side, there's an arrow, the legend says, um, benchmark, top of sill, one hundred feet. So that's also an elevation reference. So I think in, I, I'm just pointing that out because I, I wasn't sure if this, this dotted line, this ninety-seven foot, was being referred to as the boundary line, but it certainly is not. And I, I was going to offer this, but you already have it, so I don't need to. But I will, I'd like to make reference to this plot plan, which is, came from the town, tax files, I believe?
The GIS.
GIS.
And it's consistent with, well, it said ninety-seven point five, but, but with that boundary line being a straight line. And it has the footprint of the house. And you can see that if, if, as I followed the testimony, if, by looking at this plan here, it looks as though the, the edge of the septic field is perhaps, oh, in this, in this comes about maybe here on the house. It's hard to say, because these aren't scaled drawings, which I, I thought Mr. Tyler was to present to the board. But nevertheless, it, it's, it's a little bit of guesswork. And I guess the point is that there is, when you look at this side, where the, where the, this side being the, the left-hand side and where the, the shed is, compared to the open space available on the right-hand side of this home, it appears to me that, that, um, there would be plenty of room to, to locate this shed on the other side of the property. And I, I do recall that in the, at the hearing on September seventh, Mr. Tyler did say that the, the shed could be moved anywhere on the property, and I don't think there's any question about that. The, the other, so I'd, I'd like to submit this. I don't, I only have the one copy. And then, I also have the tax card, which gives measured dimensions of the home. And that was a question that Mr. Loopy, I think, was asking about how, how wide is the house at the, at the, on the back? And according to this, this tax assessor's card, it's fifty-four feet in dimension. In that, in all that dimension. The lot on the, on the back is, according to the state plan, is a hundred and twenty-nine feet. It become, the lot becomes wider at the back. This suggests that there is substantial room available on the right-hand side of the house. So I, I'd like to submit this.
That's part of the application?
Oh, you, that's part of the...
Yes, it's already...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. The, and the final thing that I would like to, to submit is this. There was a question that came up at the hearing in September concerning the, um, the, the applicant stating that he was replacing an existing shed. And of course, we know that it isn't a one-for-one replacement. And Mr. Tyler did submit, and I've seen the, the copies of the plans. I, I did a, a comparison of the footprint and the height. And my, um, comparison shows that the, the old shed was eighty square feet, and the new shed is a hundred and eight, which mathematically works out to a thirty-five percent larger footprint. And in terms of height, the old shed was six foot seven, the new one is nine foot eight. That works out to being just under forty-seven percent higher. So we're looking at a, as, as other witnesses testified, um, in September, looking at a substantially different and larger structure than, than what had originally been in place. And the final point I have is that on one of his sketches, Mr. Tyler has indicated that there's, there's four feet from his shed to my client's fence. I'd just like to point out that, that my client's fence is not located on her boundary. It was placed at least a foot onto her property, which is in accordance with, with standard, or the standards, I should say, of proper fence construction and location. So I, I guess with that, that's the final comment I have.
Any questions to Mr. Stark? All right, Mr. Stark, thank you. Any, any other butters or interested parties? Just no other comments or any questions? Is Tyler any last facts that Mr. Stark brought up that you wanted to speak to?
I could go on and on with the list. It all depends on how long I'll be here tonight.
It's the list of what?
Several things that my wife wanted to cover.
Is it, is it part of what you want to speak to? Is it?
Part of it, yeah.
Please come up, speak. I guess we'll cut you off if necessary. We want to make sure everything is heard. Really, facts relevant to the case, obviously. Yep.
She was trying to resolve the issue of, um, we've been there for about five years now. And the old shed that was there, uh, being a dark color aluminum galvanized sear shed, nobody would raise, you know, anything about it being in the way or affecting sales of houses around the area, because of what it was. And during the winter of the end of oh eight, beginning of oh nine, I believe, one of those months that we had that real bad windstorm that took a branch to the shed, and that's what basically started the shed being destroyed. So I had to take it down. So with that in mind, um, to go out and repurchase a brand-new aluminum shed, there's a structure, um, difference between that and the size that I was actually looking for, uh, with considerable price jumps. And pricing out different sheds from different companies, such as whoever sponsors Lowe's or Home Depot, to PWI, Post Woodworking, and Reed's Ferry Shed, I came to the conclusion that the best way to do it would be in a kit form. So, and in a kit form, uh, you have to have a certain number of wood put together to fit in a small area. So what they do is they give you a blueprint plan that you have to go and buy so many studs, so much flooring, and so many roofing shingles, et cetera, et cetera, and that door. But they don't tell you that, um, where you're gonna put your stuff is gonna be either all on the floor, or on the walls, or up in a raised area such as, you know, you'd say an attic, but this is a storage area above the roof inside. Some of the stuff that you have in the yard, that I have in the yard, won't fit in a standard small pitch roof shed, and it just won't fit. So my wife and I talked it over for a while, and they said, in order to put most of the daycare stuff inside the shed, have to have a steeper pitch on the roof in order for it to fit in, as well as the mower and all the other yard tools. So we wanted to bring that up, that there was never a complaint since we moved in. It's just the issue now that I have to restructure something because of Mother Nature doing this, that there's a complaint because I'm not finished with the construction. It would be nice if I could just bring one in, plop it down, and have guys come in and just assemble a shed all as one piece. But unfortunately, it's not as easy as that's to be. I've already had several guys out into the yard last year, looking at the area. They said to the right of the house would be good, but they wanted me to hire an excavator to make the land flatter and more even, because they didn't want to take the liability of constructing the shed and having it fall down. They don't want that liability. So they don't, they don't recommend it.
Okay, anything else?
Relevant to the cause, there's a lot more to talk about, but I, I don't really want to do this because the issue of, that I never had any issues with the neighbor before, or any neighbors in the area, they just, um, they just really, it's, I have to hear this from my wife. And she wants to raise comments. And I have to say that if I did start saying comments about the neighbors, I can't do that live. I don't, I don't feel it's necessary. So with that in mind, um, I'm just gonna draw a line right there.
Okay.
And that's basically, without other comments made, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Tyler, anything, any questions from the board?
No, I just wanted to say I wasn't here for the hearing, so if...
Judy.
Judy, I'm sorry.
She wasn't here either?
I was here.
But I wasn't official.
She was here, but she wasn't.
She was here.
Then it would probably be better. She knows what happened, and I don't.
You were here? I don't remember that.
Yeah, she was there. You said...
I was sitting right over there.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I didn't, I didn't say hello or anything, so I didn't know.
That'll later never come.
Did you read the minutes from last?
I did not.
Okay. What's that?
I'm guilty, I did not.
No, that's all right. So you, you would refrain from voting, you would abstain?
Yeah. Just because I don't know what's going on.
Okay. Judy, you would be able to vote on this application?
I wasn't official last, when I was here at the meeting.
You heard the evidence and you had the opportunity to read? All right, so any last questions from the voting member boards on this? Okay, thank you, Mr. Tyler. All right, unless there's any other last things from the public, I am going to close the public hearing on this one. All right, board? Comments, discussion, motions?
Are we gonna deliberate now?
Yes.
Unfortunately, I think with the, with the lack of dimensional data here, I mean, we've got, we've got nothing that's really to scale. You know, I'm not seeing a good drawing of the backyard showing property lines, you know, offsets from house corners and things like that. I don't think the size of the shed is the issue here. It's the location. And from what I am seeing, I think there's better locations in the yard to put the shed.
I agree with that. I think that, um, because the shed was there before, and because there were no adverse issues with the neighborhood, I do feel that Mr. Tyler probably felt very comfortable that he could put another shed in its place. Except he didn't follow the, the correct procedures in, in getting it done. His only fault here is that he didn't pay attention or was ignorant of it. And I don't mean that as a negative, but just wasn't aware of, I guess I should say, of perhaps what the setbacks were and how necessary they would be for a shed. I don't think his decision to put the shed there was malicious. But I do feel that there is sufficient enough property for that shed to be moved to a location that would be within the setbacks and would eliminate the liability issue that the neighbor felt when she saw the ladder in her yard, as was represented by Attorney Stark. So, um, and I, and I do feel, as Ed feels, that without, um, pure scaling and, and dimensions, that it, that it is difficult to get a true grasp. But I think that overall percentage-wise, you can, I, I can get a good feeling that the shed could be placed somewheres else on the property and moved and put on cinder blocks and be level.
Okay, Judy?
I think it's the same. I think there's enough room there to do it.
Okay.
What'd you say?
I think there's enough room there to do it other, in other places.
I look at the five criteria, and I would say that, uh, by not coming in with a plan to count in or discount where other locations could be, it basically, then it goes against, you know, there's no case for us to decide whether it's keeping with public interest, is by voting against it would be, spirit of the ordinance would be absurd if we denied it substantial justice. I don't see that he is hurt in this case, nor would the neighbors be if we denied it, obviously. And then the hardship is what we're really speaking to, that he doesn't express the hardship sufficiently enough. And I think that's partly, the applicant could have been clearer in his drawings to show where this is the only place. That's what we expect when an application comes, is why this property, why this spot? And that's really all we're asking. So if the board has to struggle to figure out where in the piece of property is better, and the applicant hasn't done quite enough homework yet.
Any last comments, motions?
Motion to deny, based on the, based on the fifth requirement of the application. I don't, I don't feel he's met. He's met the criteria for the hardship.
Okay.
Second.
Your last discussion? We have a motion to deny the application. Does not meet the criteria. All those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay.
But Mr. Tyler still does have the opportunity to move that shed... But Mr. Tyler still does have the opportunity to move that shed to within a setback area.
It meets the zoning ordinance.
And then, and get a building, move it and get the building permit, correct?
This is a denial for this particular location.
This is a denial for this particular location, but if he was to move it within it...
Doesn't deny the shed.
Yeah.
Just denies it in this particular location.
So he can move it.
Meet the zoning ordinance, absolutely.
The ordinances.
Sorry to how that turned out, but I hope you understood the issues that were raised this evening. If you have any questions, further questions, please talk to Eric.
There was a typo on the Levesseur one, is that the next one?
Linda and Michael Levesseur.
Yeah, Levesseur. On the staff review?
Yeah.
Under the fourth thing, it says from the 3:15, 2010 BOS meeting.
That should have been, yeah.
It should be 2004, I think.
Yeah, you're correct.
Because Bruce...
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna go on to the third item for this evening.
Right here. On the, on the fourth thing, it says 2010. Oh, and it should be, it should be 2004.
Linda and Michael Levesseur applicants are seeking a time extension for a special exception previously granted by the ZBA. On October 5th, 2004, the ZBA granted a special exception allowing the construction of a single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot. The special exception was extended two years on June 6th, 2006, until October 5th, 2008. The special exception was extended a second time for a period of two years on October 7th, 2008, until October 5th, 2010. Section 15.3.2.3 of the zoning ordinance authorizes the time extension. Property is located off Portage Road, which is map nine, lot 43-8, in an agricultural district. Prior to the hearing, the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. Any motions or comments on regional impact?
Take a motion that it has no regional impact.
Kayla, second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 And for this, I'm gonna have Joanne be the voting member, Judy.
Joanne's in there, yeah.
Judy, I didn't, okay. She's automatically. So do we have someone here to represent Linda or Michael Levesseur? Please come, yes, please come forward. We want you on camera and clearly heard.
Yes.
We ask all our applicants to come forward.
I have no paperwork. I don't know a lot to say. Just that I'm looking for another two-year extension. When we first bought the land, and I, I said the same thing, I think the last time I came, we, we had wanted to wait a few years to pay off the land before we built the house, and then, once we waited, the economy just sort of took a nosedive and still hasn't changed. I mean, nothing's changed. We're not ready, you know, we're not ready to take that chance and build something at this point. I work at Fairpoint, we're currently in bankruptcy court, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen with my job, and basically the same thing two years ago. I guess this will probably be my last extension that I ask for. I, I'm just afraid if I don't extend it, that when I reapply, I won't get the special exception. Even though I don't, I don't think it's a huge deal, and I don't think it impacts the neighbors, I just, where I already had it, I just keep extending it, and so I'm looking for another two.
What was the special exception for?
It was for non-conforming law, building a single-family home.
Doesn't have sufficient frontage, is what the staff application stated. So I'll go over the staff application quickly. So the, the first original VHB, was that, was VHB steer?
It's the name of the engineering firm that provided the plot plan.
Plot plan submitted with 2004 special exception, request is on page three. Original special exception was granted 2004 to allow the construction of a single-family residence on a lot that did not have sufficient frontage. Free access to the lot is via driveway on the class six portion of Portage Road. And then, the Board of Selectmen voted to grant a building permit for this lot with access via class six road in 2004.
Was there a restriction put on this lot that it can only be for one single-family house?
But the special exception, I have the minutes from the October 5th, 2004, and the application was a special exception to construct a single-family dwelling.
Yes.
On a non-conforming lot. So that was what the special exception was for, was, was for a single-family dwelling.
Right, okay.
And I, I would have to say that I was very impressed with reading the minutes from the October 2004, when this all started, because the, the board at that time was very appreciative that it had already gone to the planning board for their recommendations, which they got, it says Tony Martz here said, you do have a positive recommendation from the planning board and from the Board of Selectmen. And I believe at that time, you, you had to go to the Board of Selectmen because it was on a class six road in order for you to have traffic going on, on that. So it's, it's kind of a unique piece of property in where it's located, and I got that pretty much from reading the minutes of, of, of October 5th, 2004. I think there was a lot of legwork that, that had previously gone into this by the Levesseurs and, and... I think by not granting the extension, that it would just... I, I think they did their homework from, from the beginning, and I don't see any reason why not granting the special exception would be beneficial and not in accordance with our zoning ordinances.
Sure.
I would, I would, I am definitely in favor of continuing to grant another two-year special exception.
All right, the public hearing's open. Any other questions for?
I'd like to ask Derek if, since this was granted, if the zoning ordinances have changed significantly that would affect this application.
The only significant change I saw that might affect it would be the hundred-foot setback from surface water, but the spot that they proposed, the house and the barn in the 2004 plot plan was well without, well outside what that 100-foot setback was. If it's within 250 feet of Black Brook, they would now be subject to shoreline protection, which they would not have been subject to at that time. So they, they may need a building permit through Department of Environmental Services, but there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that's changed that would affect, affect that proposed use.
Were you aware of these changes to the zoning ordinance?
No.
Or, or to the State Department of Environmental Services?
No. I, I hadn't really looked into anything, you know, further.
As it sits right now, though, they're not. They're well outside of the 100 feet.
They were well outside when I checked it on the computer, so.
I just had a question. It says in the, in the paperwork here, where the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting are quoted from 2004, that one of the conditions was that they get a variance relative to frontage, but now they're asking for a time extension of a special exception. Was it a variance?
They, they, the Board of Selectmen believed that they needed a variance, but after we looked at it, we felt the special exception was more appropriate.
Okay.
Because we do have a special provision that you get a special exception to develop a non-conforming law.
Okay.
Did you have any more questions, Kayla? All right, so I think most of mine were answered. I had three questions. How many more extensions were you gonna ask for? And you said...
This'll probably be my, well, see, you're right, it was a lot of legwork, and for me, and I had no idea what I was doing, so it was even harder for me, and that's my, my fear. I keep, I mean, do I think the economy is gonna change in the next two years? I'm not sure. But I mean, if I could apply for a three-year extension, I would, but I guess the two-year is, is the limit.
And the...
I'm hoping I don't have to, but I...
And the requirement from zoning ordinance on the paragraph 15, 3, 2, 3, right words here. So it wouldn't be that you could start construction two years from now, it's that... 3, was it? 3, 2, 3, 3, 2, 3. If, from the date of approval, if there are no approval conditions, a special exception shall be null and void if active and substantial development or building has not begun within two years, unless approved for a longer period of time. So active or substantial is not just breaking ground, you actually have to do...
Unless, what was that, what pages?
Unless there's a special, or...
Page 97.
Unless there are approval conditions.
No, unless approved for a longer period of time, you could, you could go...
Approved for a longer period.
So I, I'm not advocating that. I, I was just pointing out the active, substantial activity taking place. And then the second question I had was, were you aware of the number of zoning ordinance changes since 2004 that you'd be, that we're not be applying to this property if we extended it? And then the last question, I guess kind of for the board is, what is the intent of the zoning ordinance in this case? How many times are we gonna extend it? So if she came back another time, she came back another time. At what point do we say enough? Right? So, anyway.
Well, I, I, I think that, to answer that question, I think that if there was some, some substantial changes in the ordinances that would cause us to revisit this, this particular application, that would be different from that which was approved, then I would say that there would be no grounds, that there would be, there would be sufficient grounds to deny the extension because there was ordinance changes, but to deny the extension now when there have been no changes, I think would cause hardship upon the applicant who's requesting it, because nothing has changed, so why not continue the extension?
And a freezing of the zoning ordinance doesn't imply a freezing of the building codes or any other process.
Correct. Building codes would be in effect that when the building permit's pulled.
Okay. And nothing like that has been...
Building codes and electrical codes continue to change in...
Right, but no building permit has been issued in this case?
Correct.
So it's zoning...
It just, yeah, that's, that's what I see.
As well as impact fees are assessed at the time a permit is issued by the building inspector, so if new impact fees were introduced by the planning board, or the fees increased, those would be realized at the time a, a permit is issued.
Okay. Any other last questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any abutters or interested party who want to speak to this? Yes. Please come forward, state your name.
Rachel Ramsey.
Okay, and you are?
At 75 Portage Road.
Okay.
And we just moved in in March 2010, so we just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Because we looked up the plot lines, and we didn't have access to the house plans or we didn't look. The two things we just wanted to know, since the power lines go through that lot, is the, are the house plans going to the east of those power lines?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
You know, north arrow here, to the end of Portage Road.
Okay, and that's where you'd be. Okay, and then, and so the driveway's gonna be at the end of that road?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, we just wanted to know how it was gonna, if it were gonna impact us next door.
And you're, but, what, can I ask what your observation is? Is, would there be any impact to you at all?
Well, I think the key thing that my husband and I were concerned about was, A, where the driveway was gonna go, if it was gonna go at the end of that cul-de-sac road, or if it was gonna go down that class six road, or how that was gonna play out. And then our other question was just how close it was gonna be to our property line, because depending on whether you go to the east or the west of the power lines, it is pretty substantial. It's gonna either be right next to us or...
Where are you in relation to this?
We're 75 Portage Road, so we're the property line, I guess, right? Well, it's like right here.
I believe they are the, the last lot on the north side of Portage Road.
Right here, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
All right.
That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions of Ms. Ramsey before we send her off?
No.
All right, thank you. Any other abutters or interested parties on this application for or against? All right, any last questions before I close the public hearing? All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing for deliberations and motions. I should say motions and deliberations, but...
I make a motion to grant a continuance for an additional two years.
Any seconds?
Extension, that's what I mean, not con, extension, not continuance. Continue it for two years. Is there a second?
No, no, not yet.
Do you need a second?
In light of, you know, the economic factors that are going on, would there be a problem with a 50% increase in that going to three years?
I have no problem going to three years. I would amend my motion to say, grant an extension for three years.
Making that official motion? I'm gonna, I would...
Yes, I am, I'm making that an official motion.
Okay.
I will second that.
Three years. All right. So, well, who did you have as a second?
I not have in, because there was none. There was no second.
Because Joanne threw it in when somebody was talking.
No, I just asked if you had, if you had.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion, discussion.
I think three years is too long. I think four years is already gone long enough. And, I mean, I would go with two years, only because there are no changes to the ordinance that really hinder the application or change the effects of the application, but I think two years is long enough.
Can we get a consensus of that? Because then we can redo, we can redo the motion.
You can change your motion. Yeah, I would agree that three is too long. It gives enough, too many opportunities for the zoning ordinance to change without us having an opportunity to say something by a year, by 50%.
Test the waters.
Yeah, just threw it out there.
I'm fine with three years because it's a 40-acre parcel and it's only for one house lot, and I don't think it's going to have any effect on any, any detrimental effect.
I really don't have a problem with three either, based on its location, the size of the parcel, and if, you know, let's face it, this, this economy is not going anywhere for at least six months, at least.
Can I, can I add that, any changes to the ordinance that would affect structure location? Would there be a wetland setback? We can't grant a permit within a wetland setback. This is just to, for the use of the law, I just wanna add.
Yeah, okay.
A use. Yeah, we, it was...
At the time the permit, the building permit is pulled, they have to conform to the...
Set, all your setbacks.
And everything that are in force at that time.
Yes.
All right, all right, so...
My motion stands.
Okay, so we have a motion with a second to make it a three-year time extension on the special exception that exists. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm gonna stand opposed as well.
Opposed.
And abstain. Three, two. Okay, so you have your time extension.
Thank you. Let the others take it up in three years.
You won't be here?
I don't know. Only good...
All right, the fourth application for the evening. Madeline Enman applicant is seeking a variance to allow the construction of a 36-foot by 16-foot shed addition to an existing detached garage. The variance is required because the proposed addition will be setback approximately five feet from the front property line, whereas section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a front yard setback of 35 feet. The property is located at 15 Leslie Drive, which is map six, lot 59D, in the agrif... in the agricultural district. The property is owned by, by Kenneth, by the Kenneth and Madeline Enman Rebucable Trust. Prior to the public hearing, the ZB needs to vote on regional impact. And the motions on...
I'll make the motion to grant that the application has no regional impact.
Seconds?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor of that it does not have regional impact, say aye.
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 Closed, abstain. Okay.
Where is Leslie Drive? I've never heard of it.
It is opposite of the YMCA. On the opposite side of Goffstown Back Road. There is a little, it's like a dirt drop that goes up.
Almost exactly opposite. Google has it going the other direction.
Opposite the Y?
Yeah, on the Goffstown Back, well, it's, it's, it's like the next property up from the road.
It's part of the Grant's property way back.
Leslie Road, Leslie Drive is opposite the Y.
So on, you, when you hit the crest of the hill coming from Manchester, as you start going back down, if you're coming to the village, it's on your right. You can find it on the map if you'd like.
No, it's just, I thought it was elsewhere. It's fine.
Google doesn't lie. Actually does.
Probably sometimes.
Dunkin' Donuts the wrong spot.
Moving right along.
We actually have an, we have an arrow in our streets.
It shows the wrong spot.
Oh, does it, huh?
This food's good.
Ever been there. So do we have someone here for the applicant? Ma'am, please come forward. We wanna see your bright shiny face. And your name is?
Madeline Enman.
Okay, good evening. So what are you proposing to do?
We wanna put a thirty-six by sixteen lean-to or storage shed attached to the existing building to put storage in. We have snow machines and a boat. Right now, everything is setting outside. We'd like to add on to the barn so that we could get all of that stuff on the inside.
Okay. How close is the existing shed to the property line? Approximately?
I would say probably ten feet.
Cause would your...
That barn has been there for thirty-plus years. And when we got the building permit from that, there was no questions asked. We just put it up and... Now, this lean-to will be the same distance that the barn is from the road.
Oh, it is? Okay, from the ma, why I ask the question is from the map it looked like, just that it might be slightly closer based on how it's situated in accordance with, with the property land goes.
No, it'll be the same distance as the existing building.
The garage currently does not conform to the front yard setback.
If you're looking at the picture here on the front.
Yeah.
There's, there's a, there's a shed already to the right-hand side of the barn. Is that gonna come down?
That is down. We've already taken down.
Okay, that's down. And it looks like, Derek, if I'm, if I'm looking at this map right and at the photo, it looks like that this Leslie Drive is actually the right-of-way. Just on the map here. Cause if this is to scale, it's showing the existing barn already within a few feet of the right-of-way, but it may not be within a few feet of the existing road.
Correct. The, the road should be shown within the right-of-way as some dashed lines.
I see it, okay. So in reality, she's only, the corner of the proposed addition is only gonna be a couple of feet off the road right-of-way.
Well, the application says.
When did you, when did you take down the other shed up next to the barn?
Oh. Probably four or five months ago.
Do you know how where that was taken down? Is that the same place you wanna put the new one? Right. Do you know how wide that shed was before?
No, it was just a, a real small building.
So this, the proposed one that you, you have the plans for in front of us is going to be bigger than this, this little shed was?
Right. It'll be the full length of the barn and it'll be sixteen feet wide.
Quite a structure.
When you say lean-to, does that mean one side is open?
No, I'm an old farmer, I guess. It will be attached from the roof of the existing building and it will have the same roof pitch.
But it'll be closed in?
Right.
I think of a lean-to as like three-sided.
About three sides, yeah.
Can I ask you, would there be any possibility of taking that lean-to and not matching it square to the front of your existing barn? And maybe starting the front of that like halfway down in the middle of the barn and extending the lean-to out the backside?
No, I don't believe so.
Do you understand what I'm...
I believe you're gonna, yeah, you're gonna run in a ledge. As it is now, we're having that all filled in. Oh, we're... These are plans to have that all filled in. And bring it up to the same height as the, the existing building.
I think, Kathy, what you're speaking to is, even if, even if they didn't slide the whole lean-to back, if they were to shorten it and, and they could build it within the setback, and the setback for the front is twenty-five feet, is it?
It's a thirty-five foot front yard setback in the agricultural district.
So it's quite large, yeah. So it's like halfway down the building, as I said, so. I mean, in that case, they wouldn't need a variance or a special, you know, they would just build it, but they'd lose half their structure, yeah.
Is there another house down the next lot over?
Gloria Sacopolis and her husband Steve live on the opposite side of the road.
Yeah.
Down.
Yeah.
And Diane Gas lives up above us.
But no one next door? Like, if this is...
Beyond you? Does anyone live beyond you?
This is Goffstown Road and this is your road. And there's, there's your house. Does anyone live here?
That's where Diane Gas lives up above us.
Okay.
And across the street you have the Salazars. And who lives across from Diane? Do you know?
What's the property number?
It's a dead-end road, so Diane Gas is the last one on the road.
There's nobody across the street from her?
No.
She own, they own both lots at the end.
Okay.
This is the Gosses? Yeah, this is the full boundary.
G A R S T.
Oh. So they own like a, a big lot at the end?
They own two lots.
Gosses own both sides beyond her lot right here.
So I'll disappear.
Anybody wanna see this over there?
No, okay.
Can I, can I see it?
What do you feel the hardship would be for you if you had to put the lean-to maybe next to the barn that's in the way back?
What was that again? I don't quite understand you.
We have a picture of your home and it shows your barn over here that you wanna add on to. It looks like if you walk out your back door and you head back onto your property, there's another building, outbuilding in the back?
It's a dog kennel.
Oh. And are the dogs fenced in, in that kennel? And where, are the, are the fences, do they go around it or totally around it or it's on one side?
They have a house and then they have runs that is all wired in, fenced in. That sets up off the, the ground.
Do you have a little stream that goes through your property there now? It looks, this, or is it a wall?
During the, uh, winter months, and if it rains a lot, it will run down through there, but usually during the summer months, it's all dried up.
So that, that's a runoff?
Right.
Winter runoff that runs down, runs like behind the, the barn that you're looking to put the lean-to on?
Right.
Right down next to the other one?
Right.
I see it. So this is dry land for you up in the front?
Yes.
You trying to find another location for this?
See what the hard, that, that would be the hardship why she couldn't put a dog down there?
If I was standing in front of that barn on the, on the road and looking straight at the barn, the, the land around it, am I correct in saying it slopes up away from the barn? So it slopes up. And how about out the back of the barn? Does it slope up out of the back of the barn too?
It's a hill, isn't it?
Yep.
You can ask the hardship question, uh, simply as if we deny this, what are you gonna do?
Oh.
You know, what would you do in the alternate? You don't have to help find a solution for it.
Right. That's a good question.
We don't, if we denied this, what would you, what would you, what would your, what would you lose out on? Why should you get this?
Well, we, the people on the road maintain the road itself. The town has nothing to do with that. And we have a big snow blower. We have a lawnmower. And everything is in this barn. So you don't have a chance to move around or do anything. I mean, we used to...
Barn is totally full.
Right. One of those things where you can't find a place for it to put it there.
Is this equipment that you're talking about, is it, is it yours and you maintain the road in the winter for your neighbors? Or is it kind of a co-op?
It's a co-op. Diane comes down her driveway. We plow between where her land ends and Sacopolis's and they plow, all four of us. There's four houses on the road and we all take care of it.
Okay, and you all have access to this equipment? Or you just operate, your, your responsibility is just in front of your house?
Right.
When I look at the aerial view and I look at the, the, the side of the barn that's closest to the dirt road, it looks like a lot of footage. Cause if you look at the cars that are parked in front of the house, and I think there's a white truck there, it looks almost. If I was to park, take that truck and put it in front of the girl, the barn, I might be able to put it there once or twice, two lengths.
Problem is, the land in front of the barn
Yeah.
is not theirs. It's part of the Leslie Drive right-of-way. If you look on this map, which is to scale.
Yeah.
The existing dirt road is, as we're looking at it on the aerial view
Yeah.
is on the right-hand side of the right-of-way as you're, as you're going up the road from Goffstown Back Road. So the actual, they've got the iron pin
Yeah.
property marker almost set right on the corner where the addition is, you know, where they like to put the addition.
I wanna ask a question of Derek, and this is gonna apply to the next application as well, and the fact that we're talking about the right-of-way. In this case, the right-of-way belongs to who? The town?
Yes, it's, uh, my research showed that it's a class six road, so it's a town road, but not maintained.
What's the expectation of that right-of-way? The, how, you know, what's the intent of the zoning ordinance to maintain that property? To maintain it so that it's not being infringed upon, so that the town may be able to do whatever it needs to in the future for that?
Yeah, class five right-of-way is public access. Anyone can use that right-of-way.
Then the town is expected to maintain it.
If it's a class six, no, they're not...
You said five, though, the fo, class five portion of it.
Class five would be.
Would be, but class six is not now maintained.
Correct.
That's why they have it.
And in some, some places in town, it's, it's a wood road that goes off in the woods and is overgrown. In some cases, it's more like this where it is passable.
Right, ultimately, the expectation is the town is, wants to keep those clear and frage obstruction.
Right.
And that's the whole intent why we have the zoning ordinance, right?
Yeah, I, I don't know what, you know, the Department of Public Works, if they have a policy or anything, but yeah, you can't, you can't have any obstructions in it. You can't obstruct the right-of-way.
Mrs. Enman, you said that you are currently excavating or that part of this hill would have to be excavated in order to put the addition on?
Right.
How much of a hardship would it be, and I, I think I'm getting back to Kathy's question. If you were to, if you were to set back fifteen or twenty feet down the side of the barn and excavate deeper into the hill, would it, would it be that much more of a hardship?
You've got that little, uh, stream?
Yeah. That's, the stream goes right behind it.
Okay. I see.
And why wouldn't you put it on the other side of the barn?
On the left-hand side as you're looking at it, instead of the right. Basically, you'd be reversing the drawing.
Right.
And would it be a hardship to put the, to put the addition on the left-hand side of the barn as you're looking at it?
No, I don't think so.
It's still within...
But what are you gaining?
It's still gonna be...
But it's going on, yeah, right, it's still gonna be within the set, within the thirty-five feet. It's still gonna be in, but you're gonna be further back from that Leslie Drive right-of-way.
Still non-conforming.
It's still non-conforming, but you're putting an addition onto a building that's already non-conforming.
And it's not what they asked for, so...
Right, right.
Hate to try to describe exactly what they're trying to do.
If you look at this subdivision plan, I believe it shows the area of the right-of-way and then it shows, which, which shows it at like forty-one point seven seven feet. But then there's a dotted line, which is probably the path...
That's the actual existing roadway right now.
And you can see where, where you were talking about, it's that much further, you were talking about, one of you, that it's that much further away.
Yeah.
And that's why it looks that way in the picture.
Right.
Now, I don't know if this road will probably never be paved, more than likely, unless some big subdivision comes up.
Well, what, yeah, somebody to garcell off the property and somebody goes in and builds houses and then, but, you know, now it's who pays to put the road in?
Right.
And does it go from class six to class five and on and on and on we go.
Right.
This is a class six road.
Six.
Is it, is it a town, it's a town road?
It's a town road, but it's not town maintained.
But it's not maintained. And I believe it's, I believe it, it's been well stated that it is not the intention of the selectmen in this town to take over the maintenance of any roads at this time.
No, but if this, if this back piece were ever developed, but even if, even if they did pave it, to put a road through here, it would probably be only paved maybe twenty-four feet, not the full forty-one.
Correct. Which still might give them a little bit of room. I, I have, you know, I have a problem approving it where it is, only because it's that much closer. Should that road ever be developed, I think I'd have less heartburn with it being put on the left-hand side.
But since it's not, I guess, the way I'm looking at it is, if it, if she had no barn and she just wanted to put up a structure, then I might look at it saying, well, yeah, you're really close to the road.
Yeah.
But there's an existing structure. She's enlarging it, but really, what... But there's an existing structure, she's enlarging it, but really, what difference does it make? It, it's not like she's going closer to the roadway, she's just enlarging it, well, maybe a smidgen, but she's mainly enlarging it on the, on the, whatever it is, north side. So, really, how is that hurting anything? Because the structure's already there, she's not, it's not like she's building a new structure.
I agree with you, I'm just kinda looking into the future and saying, if that property, that garse property ever gets sold and developed.
All right, we're still on the public hearing, so any other questions for Ms. Edman?
Yeah, we can't get off on our-
I'm trying to keep our focus here.
I, I want to ask a question, um, the shed that's there now, on the left-hand side where Ed is thinking that maybe you could build the, the lean to as, instead, is there, is that like a path that goes out to the back to your dog kennel?
No, that's the stream.
No, right, right here next to the shed?
On the left-hand side?
Right, on the very left-hand side, right, this is right here, no.
We'll let her answer that, what that is.
Just right here, on the very left-hand side of the shed.
Between the house and the shed.
Between the house, between the shed and the grass even, is that a path that goes to the back?
I'm not sure.
Right by the-
What we're looking at is on the very left-hand side of the barn, is that a slight hill that slopes down into the grass?
Yes.
It is.
And I have perennial flowers planted along in that dirt.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Ms. Edman? All right, thank you for your testimony and application. We'll see, is there anybody else speaking to this application? For or against, abutters? All right, just give her a minute here, please come on forward.
Hi, I'm Diane Garst, big property at the end.
Right.
Could you spell your last name?
G-A-R-S-T. And you've all touched upon all of my concerns with this. If you look at where the barn is now, it's very narrow there. If there happens to be a car parked, or a pickup truck, an extended cat pickup truck with an eight-foot bed, that's parked right in front of that garage door, fifteen feet of it is into Leslie Drive. That's a very narrow corner at that point, because the whole forty-foot width is not available to begin with. Now, if you have cars parked in front of this garage, I don't think a fire truck, an ambulance, whatever, could get through if they ever had to. And that's in the summer. In the winter, when we plow, it's even narrower. You were questioning on Leslie Drive-
Do you want to take this?
No, I've got one like this, so I was just gonna say, all of this is already used up by the frontage of their property. This is her parking area, what you're looking at right here. All of that is built into Leslie Drive already.
So can you describe what the this is, I can't see what you're saying, so.
Okay.
All of what is?
The right of way.
If you're looking, okay, if you're looking at this picture, the white vehicles that are parked in front of the house-
Okay.
You see a rock wall that's got a flower garden. If you go to the right of the house, there's a rock wall, part of that lawn, it's, I mean, that's already all in Leslie Drive. I mean, my fear is Leslie Drive is disappearing. If someday I do have an opportunity to sell the land and they want to put a street in to develop, is there gonna be some kind of precedent set here, is there, you know, reverse possession or something, where it's gonna be assumed that I can't put the street in? Because there's already so much built into the street?
There can't be adverse possession on town land.
I keep asking people that, and I hope everybody remembers that.
It's state law.
Okay. So then I would feel awfully guilty having to say, gee, rip up your, your paved parking, your lawn, your flower garden, and now possibly part of the lean to, because you're right, Leslie Drive curves at that point. If you continue on sixteen feet, you're pretty darn close to being in the street.
Go ahead.
Nope, I was letting her finish before you stepped in.
It actually looks like, if you continue on up to your property, you're making a right-hand turn just beyond her barn?
Yes.
To do that, and actually, the right of way breaks left.
Well, we put our driveway in, into our property, into the two lots.
I see, okay.
With, there's like the pin that marks-
Right.
The Vale property, Leslie Drive, and our property in that corner, and we go around and like, kinda swoop into our land and go up that.
But the actual right of way breaks, in this picture, it actually breaks this way.
Correct.
Is it possible to add this addition and be even with the existing structure? So it's not to encroach further into Leslie Drive right of way, but add to the north portion of the structure?
I mean, my opinion is the left-hand side keeps it a bit further, but, you know, you're, you're still, you're awfully close. I'm, I just want to make sure in the future, if I should want the street or whatever, it's not denied, because there's, you know, something five feet away from the edge of a street.
If they develop the road.
Yeah.
My first question this evening was, and I don't think I got a straight answer, was, how close is the barn to the property line now? And what, how much closer does this addition bring into?
Well, the front of the barn to Leslie Drive is about five feet. The edge of her existing barn to her property line is probably fifty feet. So, her-
You're right, to Leslie Drive.
Right, her issue is not having the frontage on to Leslie Drive. Not to her boundary line with me.
When did you buy your property?
Nineteen eighty. And no, I don't believe that barn was there then, though I don't have proof of exactly what.
I think it would be on the assessments card.
She mentioned that it was only there for the last thirty years or-
Yeah.
So. It wasn't before the zoning ordinance.
No, that's not what I'm getting at.
So, I guess I'm just going back to my, my old question, is there a way to extend that barn on, on the side that she wants to extend it, without infringing further into the setback, but keep it with what's there now? There's no way to do that?
Yeah, it appears from the, it appears from the plot plan or the boundary plan that to follow the front line of the building, it's, it's cocked just a little bit at angle. So we'll go further into-
We'll approach further in.
By putting it on the right side where she's asking.
Correct.
And they'll be, I mean, by whiskers, they'll be on their property, but to me, it's, if there's gonna be two garage doors, you tend to park in front of your garage doors, and that's right about where my corner goes in, and it makes it awfully tight.
Okay, any other questions from Ms. Garst? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other abutters or interested parties? Ms. Edman, anything to respond?
Well, when we started this project, Diane was complaining about the bolts and snow machines and stuff being on the outside of the barn, and it looked kind of muddy-looking. So we decided the only way that we could get all of this stuff inside was to build on this addition.
Okay. All right. And what was the length of the, I'm sure it says in here, the length is thirty-six feet, okay.
It's a sixteen.
And the, the barn right now is thirty-six feet long, you're making it thirty-six feet, sixteen feet wide. Okay. Any last questions for Ms. Edman? All right.
She was talking about the, the vehicles being parked around, if the bolts and all of that stuff was on the inside, then a pickup truck, we have very little company on that road. So, there isn't probably more than two or three times a year that there's more than three or four cars at the driveway.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
The, the boat and the snowmobiles, are you storing these for other people, or are these yours?
They were my husband's, he passed away two years ago, and I have kept them for the grandsons.
Thank you.
And they don't have a place for it, so Grandma decided that they could stay there. Thank you.
Or did you have something?
I did, I had one more.
Oh, you, you can ask it.
Yeah, I just have one question for you. Why did you decide? What was your thought process and decision-making in putting the shed there? So close to Leslie Drive? Was there any consider, what, why did you think there, and was there any consideration given to any other place on your property?
No, we thought it would be a lot cheaper to add on a section there and build in-
Standalone.
A freestanding place.
Okay.
Any last questions? Before we close the public hearing? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing on that, and any discussion or motions? Again, she's looking for a variance.
I think I have to probably stand with previous comments and the fact that it's gonna be encroaching even closer than Leslie Drive. I think there is a, there's a better location for it. Even though it's, it's still non-conforming, the left-hand side of the barn, in my opinion, would be the better place if it has to be sixteen by thirty-six. And, yeah, I can understand that it's gonna save money by attaching it to the existing barn, because it's one less wall you have to build. But I do have concerns with the right of way and its proximity to the right of way, in the event there is any future development on the property that abutters, and they do go wider with the road. You know, based on the drawings we have in front of us, and the information that we got tonight, I, I would, I would say this, there's a better location for it.
So you're stating that this, it wouldn't fall within the spirit of the ordinance? So we're looking at the variance criteria, correct? So, the contrary to public interest is the first one, spirit of the ordinance is the second, substantial injustice is the third, property values before the hardship, so you're speaking to that she doesn't satisfy the spirit of the ordinance and hardship.
I know that I addressed the issue of the existing shed that was there before and was taken down four months ago, but I, I don't think my answer that I thought was really clear when I think about it now, because I don't know whether it's going to be, it's going to be definitely bigger, but I don't know if it's gonna be wider-
Than the shed that was taken down.
Right.
Uh, the public hearing is closed, so we can't hear from Ms. Edman, but do we have any indication?
I, I would just say that the barn is twenty-four by thirty-six. So that'll give you an idea of that that's twenty-four feet now, and they'd be adding sixteen on to that.
Yeah, that, that shed that's in the photograph looks like it was probably only ten or twelve.
It looks like half the, yeah, like twelve, it looks-
Yeah, half or maybe even less, I think it almost looks like there's space between the barn and the shed.
That little shed only held two snow machines.
We, we can't hear your comments now, Ms. Edman.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Yeah, so it's, I think in answer to your question, Kathy, it looks like the new addition would be larger than what that shed was that used to be there. Width-wise.
Okay, so Ed is ordered a motion?
Well, not really.
Not really, no, no.
Oh, you didn't?
No, no.
I didn't really make an emotion, I just kinda threw out for it.
Breaching, sorry.
No, I, I understand.
Can I ask another question? I don't have a ruler or a scale or anything with me, but this drawing, this, this plan that was done by a surveyor, the scale is one inch equals a hundred feet. So I took my piece of paper and I drew a line as to, on the left, as to the original amount of space between the front of the building and the edge of the right of way, and then on the left, I did the same thing, and it's like-
Before you go on, Joanne, now, it's been crossed off, the scale has been crossed off.
Not on this one, I've got the bigger one.
Joanne has the original-
So hers is good?
It does, but it does not show the proposed addition.
Oh, I see, okay, so her scale is right on her map.
But it's so small, you know, if, if we, we're all sitting here saying, well, it's gonna be closer, it's gonna be closer, but if the scale is one inch by a hundred feet, you know, like, what did, what did you say that the length of this building, the existing barn was? Thirty-six feet?
It's twenty-four by thirty-six.
So.
You're probably looking at the, the left, the right front corner, as you're looking at the barn, in reality, is probably only four or five feet from the right of way. Now, the angle of the new, of the proposed addition is gonna angle even, not only closer towards the Leslie Drive right of way, but at that corner post, the Leslie Drive right of way angles left towards the proposed structure, so you go sixteen feet out, you're probably gonna be within, within two feet of the Leslie Drive right of way.
But this, the, if you drew, if you took this and drew, I'm drawing on here, I hope that's okay. If you drew the structure, it, it's probably less than a foot difference. And I'm just-
I bet you'd be surprised, I bet it'd be more than, I bet you're cutting the distance in half.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say the application states-
I don't think so.
Derek, do you want to help me out?
Oh, yeah.
The application says the variance is required because the proposed addition will be set back approximately five feet from the front property line.
Again, that was using the one inch to one hundred scale and, and any-
So you're, you're believing it's five feet approximately?
You know, with the knowledge that I am using a scale at one inch equals a hundred, so there is a pretty good amount of error, could it be closer, so.
I think it's like a foot difference.
We have houses on back mount, Goss Town Back Road, right here in the village that are, what'd you say, maybe three and five feet from the, from the road?
There are some houses that are very close to the road, yes.
I have a friend who lives in New Boston, that's New Boston, so he's in the same situation, right? In the wintertime, the, the snow gets plowed to the edges, onto the, his house. It's bad for your house, so, how, you know, three to five feet is-
But they're plowing their own snow.
Right.
So they can put it where they want.
At the moment.
Well, true. If that, if that land ever did-
I would-
Get developed, this would have to be brought to a class five.
I'm kinda being the devil's advocate here, because I would hate to see fifteen years down the road, ten years down the road, somebody come in, develop it, and, you know, the highway department come in and say, we need to remove the right front corner of your barn, because you're too close to the, to the road setback, or the, the road right of way. Now, that becomes even more of a hardship than, than asking her to move it to the left-hand side of the barn or to the back of the barn, I would think. Now, I, I think we're taking non-conforming and making it even more non-conforming, if you want me to define it that way.
Do you need more questions in there?
But if you put it, I mean, either way you look at it, if you, if, if you think about, where else are we gonna put it? Where else would, where else would you?
I'd feel better with it on the left-hand side.
But you're still-
You're still not conforming. You're still not conforming, but you're not making it any more non-conforming, if anything, it might be a little less, because the frontage is gonna be, there's gonna be even more room between the right of way than there is now of the, for the addition than there is for the barn. If anything, it might be a little less because the frontage is gonna be, there's gonna be even more room between the right-of-way than there is now of the, for the addition than there is for the barn.
But there was all, then I go back to the shed that was taken down four months ago. The shed was there.
It was a small shed. This is gonna be a structure with footings.
It was a small shed, but it was, it was exactly, the front of it is exactly where the front of the new shed is gonna be, so it is the same difference to the road.
We're not replacing like kind.
But we can't make it the grandfather's, we can't.
No, no, I can't, I'm trying with the discussion of the, from where the building is to where it is to the road. Whether it be larger or the same size of the building, the different, the distance between the road and the front of the building would not change. That's the point that I'm just making.
Okay, so any motions? Before we walk through the variance criteria, because that's how we should be looking at this?
I hate to do this, but tell you what, I'm gonna make a motion.
You wanna go through the variance criteria first?
Sure, we can step through it.
Can we do that first?
Sure.
So the first one is that granting the grants would not be contrary to the public interest. And she states it will not infringe on the road or abutting properties. Is, does this, in our mind, contrary to the public interest?
I hate to say, but I would say yes, because it's, it is in fact infringing even further towards the right-of-way or into the setback. And I think we're making a nonconforming situation even more nonconforming. And I think that in the event the road is developed in the future, it's gonna become a problem for everybody, for not only the landowner, but for the developer.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed, if we were to grant the variance, would the spirit of the ordinance be observed? Any difference from what you stated?
No.
They work hand in hand.
Yeah.
Granting the variance would do substantial justice, are we providing substantial justice to Ms. Enman if we were to grant this application? That's the third one. Fourth one is the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished if we were to grant this. And then the fifth one, that demonstrating that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship if we were to deny it. That there would be a hardship in that there is no substantial relationship between the public purposes of the ordinance and the application to it here, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. So those are the five criteria.
I think under five, I know, I can see a better alternative. Even though it's still nonconforming, it's a better nonconforming alternative, and that's putting it on the left-hand side.
Okay. Any comments or motions based on the variance criteria?
Make the motion to deny without prejudice. Based on the fact that it does not meet one and five, actually, one, two, and five.
Are you sure on the without prejudice part of it?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, no, I'll withdraw that portion.
You don't have to speak to prejudice, you just say, you just accept or deny.
Yeah, I would have to make a motion to deny based on one, two, and five.
So you're stating it's contrary to-
I think it's contrary because of its location being that much closer to the right-of-way. I think the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Or is not observed, yeah. And I don't believe that it would result in an unnecessary hardship because I do feel that there is a better location for it. It would not increase the cost of construction. It'd just be flipping it from one side of the barn to the other.
Okay. Any discussion, any seconds? All right, I, let's see.
If you say that, are we saying then that if we put it on the left side of the barn, that's more in keeping with the ordinance versus still being nonconforming?
I think he's saying that by putting it on the other side, he is, he's bringing it further back from the right-of-way, which is the concern. They lean to, from what we're looking at right now, almost sits on the edge of the right-of-way, there's no ifs, thes, buts about that.
Right.
That's where I come forward and say that the shed sat, that was taken down four months ago, sat there too. But this is a different building and it's not replacing what was there, it is replacing plus building.
New.
New, and increasing the size of the structure. Putting it on the other side of the barn, like I said, it just sets it back further from the street, allows the use which is, which she's intending to have it for to exist, and eliminates the possibility of snow damaging a building, or if they're right on the edge of the right-of-way. When you look at the future development, it, and you have to, you have to consider that because that's-
It's a possibility.
There's a possibility, and it was stated by the landowner, that that is definitely a possibility.
If they put it on the left side, that street issue is still gonna be there, it's still not gonna go away.
Judy, I'm gonna have to ask, I'm not gonna be rude, you are not a voting member on this application, so you cannot participate in deliberations.
Really?
See, we always allow, we always allow participation in deliberations, but not voting.
No, we, our practice is that not participate in deliberations.
That's your choice as chairman?
Uh, it is.
Is that your choice as chairman?
No, it's actually state recommendations.
Could I see that? Not right now, but-
We can discuss this, because there was actually a state law that's gone into effect in July that addresses this.
Right. We'll address it after, at the end of the meeting, that would be a good time.
So we have a motion? Any seconds? I'm gonna second the motion, and I'm gonna add onto the, onto the hardship criteria in that, that, you know, I don't see that this has to be built as this is. The applicant didn't express, you know, whether we asked the right questions or not, you know, that this size had to be done, that something of half the size could have resulted in the same use. You know, I'm, and then, and then the spirit of the ordinance is, I, we're creeping towards the road, at some point, we've gotta halt. That's my words, mostly repeating, but in- So we actually, we now have a first and a second that it connects, we voted on any, any additional discussion before we make a vote? All right, so we have a vote on the floor to deny the application. All those in favor of denying the application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
All right, no abstentions, so three, two, or two to three, we got. Sorry, Ed. So the application's still open on the floor, it doesn't end it there, and it's not automatically approved either unless there's a motion. Any further discussion?
I'd like to continue this. I really would, I'd really like to give some more thought to this, I just don't feel I'm ready to vote on it.
I would like to see exactly what the, what the land is like on that left side.
This is American.
What else, Kathy, anything else, or you wanna continue for how long, to the next meeting?
To the next meeting, I'd like to give some more thought to this, I really do.
Okay.
If we do continue it, I would like more information as far as what the land is like on the left side of the barn, and also the exact measurements of what that setback will be, existing building, and then the addition.
Okay, is that something that we can bring in, Derek, without opening the public hearing?
I would say you still have everyone here that participated in the public hearing, so.
We have to make the announcement now that the public hearing is reopened, it's still open.
Derek, question on this map that shows the iron pins, the caps, that they are existing, correct? If we go out there, we can actually, if I were to go out there, I can take measurements from that iron pin?
It should be, because it's a very recent document, I believe it's from January of this year.
Joanne?
January fourteenth.
Okay, so I would say, provided they were set as, you know, according to that plan, and I can work with the applicant to provide some,
Some of those measurements or data.
Some of those measurements.
If you wanna do that, that's fine.
Any other discussion?
No, but I'd like to, when you're going, I know that it might look like a meeting, but it would only be the two of us.
Two is great, three is a crowd.
But I would like to go, you know, and walk and see exactly what we're all talking about here.
Derek, any other comment before we make a decision here? Derek, do we need a vote to open the public hearing back up again?
No, I don't think so. It just would be a vote to continue, it would be a vote to-
I make a motion to continue it, the application until our November meeting.
And to reopen the public hearing.
And to reopen the public hearing. With the condition that additional information regarding, what did we want?
Joanne requested information about land on the left of the barn, and also a more exact boundary plan showing what's there existing and where the proposed addition would go. More exact dimension.
Who's gonna be providing that, the applicant?
It'd be the applicant's responsibility, but I can work with them to-
Okay. Any other conditions that we wanna add to, that we, or information that we need?
Sounds such like an American.
Okay, there's a motion to continue this application, opening the public hearing.
Hey, can I just ask one question of when the November meeting is?
I believe we had, there was some discussion, because I have my schedule.
Yeah, it's scheduled for November second.
There's a notation on there that we had decided, we had talked about the ninth, the following Tuesday.
Well, any input, or what's the Gofftown scheduling for the ninth?
The ninth day is a sewer commission meeting, because we're the, I'm always the following Tuesday after this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
So, um-
I've made a note that we were talking about the ninth.
I think we meet six to seven, but we can-
But I would just say that you decide when the November meeting is before you, if you could share with Kevin.
Third is wide open.
Sewer commission meeting's on the ninth, budget committee meeting on the ninth.
Wait a minute, Wednesday, Wednesday the third, I could do that one.
Any discussion, any comments on Wednesday the third?
I just need to look it up. Is that November third?
Yes. No, I don't know what I'm doing at the end of this week, quite alone a month from now, but I'll go ahead and say, yeah, I'm open at the moment.
Thursday, Friday, I'm off, because my daughter gets married on Saturday.
Okay.
That whole week sticks for me.
How about the next week?
Gail's very important.
The tenth is, well-
Are you still looking at the third?
No.
The tenth is, the tenth would be out for me.
The tenth is, she's still recovering from the weekend before.
Too much levity at the-
No, I'll, I'll, I'd rather do the third than the tenth, but the minutes might come in a day or two late.
It's gonna be exceptional hardship.
Can I get a hardship on that?
I'll have to ask the legislature.
I'll get them done.
Or they're thinner, they're not as detailed as they-
And I'm volunteering.
So you said, so the next week was not good for you either, though?
The tenth I cannot do, the third I can do, it'll just make, it'll be a real stretch for that week for me, I can do it, I've done worse. I know that sometimes the sewer commission has made arrangements to meet at five-thirty instead of six-thirty, but I can't speak for them. One of three.
And you're speaking for the Tuesday the ninth?
Tuesday the ninth? And we do have alternates, so that's- Tuesday the ninth is a planning board meeting.
Yeah.
Budget committee, yeah. No, no, I take that back, it's Thursday, I'm sorry.
Budget committee's meeting that night, I can't be here.
Yeah, that's not a good meeting.
Okay. Third?
You're the most important.
We have a lot coming up on the third? We don't know, we won't know for a week.
No, that's all right.
So we've heard the third, Ed, you?
Sure.
Do we meet at six?
I won't know until the second.
Instead of seven? No. No, okay, all right.
It's hard, it's hard to meet at six.
Yeah. I hear you. Joanne, the third?
The third is good.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll add it to this vote?
Sure.
So we add it to your motion, that the next public meeting would be on the third, twice the second?
Yep.
So we have a motion, do you have a, I mean, you threw out the second?
No, I made the motion.
You make the motion, the third is okay?
And Gail seconded it.
Continue the public hearing? Or we'll open the public hearing, continue this application for the third of November, which will be our next meeting.
With the additional information?
Yes. And you're seconded. All right, all of those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstaining opposed. So Ms. Enman, we'll be hearing from you again, we'll have that information hopefully by the third of November, when we will look forward to that additional information. All right.
Sure.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Oh, the lodge.
To hear the last applicant of the evening. The Webster Lodge of the Independent Order of Odd Fellows applicant is seeking a variance to allow the construction of a freestanding sign that does not conform to the required front yard setback. The variance is required because the sign will be located one foot from the front property line, whereas a ten-foot setback is required. Section six of the zoning ordinance is affected. The property is located at forty-two Mountain Road, which is map four, lot eighty-five, in a residential one district. Prior to the public hearing, the ZBA needs to vote on regional impact. Any comments or motions for regional impact?
I make a motion, it doesn't have a regional impact.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor that it does not have a regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining, five, zero, zero. And so do we have a representative from the Webster Lodge?
Doug Doster, Secretary, Webster Lodge number twenty-four, Independent Order of Odd Fellows, forty-two Mountain Road, Gofftown, New Hampshire.
Go just follow your last name for me.
D-O-S-T-E-R, like Foster with a D.
Gotcha.
Approximately eighteen months ago, we resurfaced our parking lot area, and included in that resurfacing was the removal of an existing sign which had been there for many years. Building, I think, was originally a American Legion Hall, was then a daycare center or nursery school for many years, and I think we've owned the property about seven or eight years. Resurfacing the driveway, the signage for the building was located in the center of that driveway and very close to the edge of the roadway. Parking area, we were all quite surprised that it had not been struck by a vehicle at some point in time or back to- Parking area, we were all quite surprised that, that had not been struck by a vehicle at some point in time or backed into. We removed it when we resurfaced it, and because of the type of an organization that we are, it kind of takes a little while to get things accomplished. Contracted for a, a new sign to be fabricated, complying with the regulations for such signs, and upon application, we found that, um, if we were to place the sign per code, that the sign would actually be on part of the asphalt area in front of the building, uh, which was a new section of asphalt that had been placed in. Measured as best as we could from the drawings that had been given us by the town, and, uh, found that in order to both be in a aesthetically pleasing position and, uh, to fit in the grass area that we have in front of the lodge, that the request for a variance would be required. I have a couple of photographs of the temporary signage that we have in the two locations. And as you can see, if we were to comply with the existing requirements, it would be somewhat askew. Request that the consideration be made to place the sign closer to the edge of the property so that it'll fit into our grassy area.
May I have questions?
Do you have any, um, drawings of what kind of a sign you're planning on putting there or the size of it?
I believe it's four by four.
That, that sounds correct because I reviewed the sign permit when it initially came in.
It's four by four sign. It's be suspended on a rectangular metal, uh, piping at a height of about seven feet.
Now, for, for the sign, wouldn't, um, the planning board have to approve it?
Not in this district. The only districts that the planning boards approve sign design are Village Commercial and the RSBO one.
And the six point five residential agricultural and conservation districts, it says the following signs are permitted in, in the residential R one and R two. Such signs shall only be illuminated by a shielded external white light. No internal illumination is permitted. Six point five point one says one building or freestanding sign shall be no more than twelve square feet in area. Four by four is sixteen.
It is sixteen. Again, how that's calculated, I would have to look at the specific sign.
But six point five point one says twelve.
My recollection is when I first reviewed the sign permit, the setback was an issue, not the size. Keeping in mind that twelve foot, that twelve, uh, square foot limitation. Regardless, I would say that, um, any approval would be subject to that twelve foot.
That would be a, that could be a condition.
I don't think it even needs to be a condition. They, they did not seek a variance from the size. And that would, they would have to come back to go greater than twelve square feet.
Okay. So this is just the setback, so if they wanted to a four by four, they'd have to come back for a variance?
Correct. Now, whether or not that four by four includes any of the supporting structure, I'd have to look at the specifics of the sign design. Again, my recollection when I first saw the sign permit was, the size wasn't the issue.
Okay.
It was the setback.
Uh, want to just put out that, uh, in Derek's staff review, he has section six of the zoning ordinance does not provide a required front yard setback for freestanding signs in the residential one, residential two, agricultural conservancy, and open space districts. It has been my practice to require a ten-foot setback similar to the setback required for other districts, which is in the table maximum sign dimensions, section six point six. On that, I see that Village Commercial is five foot front yard setback. Is that correct, five?
Yes, that is correct for a freestanding side.
And is, so five foot is acceptable in this? Is this the type of activity that it would be in a Village Commercial? Is the lodge? Yeah, the, the use of this piece of property in residential one, is that a similar type of use in Village Commercial? I guess I'd have much sure.
I think, I think it would be, but I can't think of any, to be honest with you, any fraternal organizations in the Village Commercial. I know there are some in Pinnardville, um, but I can't think of one.
Or just even just a, uh.
In general.
Yeah, in general or.
Yeah, business or this type of sign, I would say it'd be comparable with a Village Commercial.
Okay. So five foot. All right.
When you, um, asphalted across the front of, of the structure, that asphalt wasn't there?
That asphalt was not there. It was, it was a brick walkway.
But the sign wasn't on the walkway, was it?
The, the original sign was in the driveway.
Oh.
And it, and I get from what you're saying is that when you decided to asphalt the front, that nobody at that time had any, any, um, knowledge that they might have an issue with where the sign was going to go?
We did, we didn't feel that, nobody had the foresight at that point in time.
Okay.
That we would have a difficulty in placing the sign in an appropriate spot in the front of the building. At this point, we certainly have twenty twenty hindsight and say we should have left it where it was, which would have probably been within the right of way. Which would have been grandfathered in.
Now, you had mentioned on page two of your application that the mountain road has a wide right of way at this location. Where does the right of way? I, I didn't see any, anything that showed me. Or maybe the. How close to the right of way the sign would be?
The, the right of way, I believe, is twenty-five foot, twenty-five foot from the center of the roadway is.
Yes, a fifty foot right of way.
So it's twenty-five foot right of way from the center of the roadway.
Yeah.
At that point, the prop, the new property line or the virtual property line begins. So twenty-five foot from the center of the roadway, we get to the assumed property line of the building, and from that point, by code, the sign has to be ten foot from that.
Right. What I'm trying to, to. When they paved, do you know if where the new, because mountain road was just paved over in the past two years?
Correct.
Is the edge of the new paved road the edge of the right of way?
No, it is not.
Okay.
The right of way extends from the center of the roadway twenty-five feet to the building.
Okay, so what part of that grassy area in the front is still part of the right of way? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
From the photographs that are there?
Yeah.
The one where the sign is on the grass?
Yeah.
The right of way extends one foot before the sign.
Almost half the grass is in the right of way?
Correct.
It's the bottom two pictures.
Okay, look at that, yeah.
If he was within, co, if, if he stayed within the zoning ordinance, the two pictures above would apply. Is your GIS map, uh, this map here showing the rights of ways, the road location thirty-five feet from?
Okay.
The roadway.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it.
Is it going to be on stilts?
It will. It's on a metal frame.
Okay, so there'd be no, there'd be no, um, site impact by vehicles going up and down, returning in and out of the.
I think the reason that I took the photographs as I did from a distance so that you can see that it does not interfere in any way with traffic entering, uh, or, or leaving the parking area. The sign will be at a height so that there will be, I believe, three feet below the bottom edge of the sign.
So could you, from where the right of way ends on, on the property, can that sign be placed, um, five feet back from the right of way?
No, ma'am. The request is one foot. If it's five foot back from the right of way, it will be very, very close to or on the asphalt. As you can see in the upper photographs.
Photograph, let's place ten feet from the right of way.
That is correct. As best as can be determined because I was told that the center line of the road is not necessarily the center line of the right of way.
Right.
They're not sure whether they put the road dead center in the center of, so.
Yep.
Dead center in the right of way or to the left or to the right by a foot or two.
If the distance is split, does it keep it off the asphalt?
If the distance is split.
In other words, if it's granted and you put the sign at five feet.
No, sir, it does not.
That's what Kathy just asked.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, I think that's what she was getting at, is if it was split, would it still be on the asphalt, the sign frame?
And he said that's not what he's asking for.
Right.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Doster? Judy, you can actually ask. Just want to make sure your, the line's in the sand. You can ask questions.
Oh, that's all right.
Okay.
Are you going to have a light on the sign?
It is not, it is not to be lighted.
Is that by choice?
Yes, because we don't want to have to go through a hassle of going through the lighting portion of it.
That would be another whole thing.
It would be. Moonlight.
Okay, no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Doster.
Thank you very much.
All right, is there any other abutters, or any abutters or interested parties? Seeing none, any issues before I close the public hearing?
I would like to make a comment. Thank you for such an intimate.
Make sure we note that in the record. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to close the public hearing. Any discussion or motions?
Well, I actually would have felt a lot better if I could have seen what they wanted for a sign to, to be there, to be very honest with you. It is a residential neighborhood and, um, the only other commercial kind of property like this is the Masonic Temple, which is down the road, and.
I have a question for Mr. Doster.
I'm concerned about what the sign's going to look like.
That's not really our jurisdiction, though. Ours is the use. What the sign really looks like isn't so much of a question.
Use and area.
I know somebody went through a sign issue. That we, we, we did want to see it.
Yes, you're right. You can always appeal an administrative decision. To see it. Right? You have that opportunity.
Okay, so it's not going to be in the right of way because there was a section in the book that says, um, something about, um, insurance.
It is in the right of way. That's why they're here.
No, the sign will be outside of the.
Oh, it will be? I thought it was in it.
No, it is one foot off the edge of right of way.
Oh, okay. Um, I feel all fuzzy tonight. I'm not thinking straight.
He did say, he, he did say he believed the other one was inside.
Oh, okay.
And no, we can't ask any more questions of him.
Oh, I missed that, okay.
All right, any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? All right, we have, without hearing no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor with a second to approve the variance as requested. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Okay, congratulations. All right, we do have one other thing on the agenda this evening. It's the recent planning board that was held on the twenty-third of September that, uh, we were invited to provide comments on inputs to zoning ordinances, uh, to proposed zoning ordinances for the March vote. Derek, myself, and Gail was there. We commented a number of things, and we produced this, uh, it has Gail's minutes from that meeting talking about what we proposed for possible zoning, uh, ordinance changes, and then an actual input to the zoning ordinance. Did everyone get a chance to take a look at that? Any comment on it? It's, uh, I drafted it up based on, I think, uh, what we've been trying to address over the last year, trying to look at specifically, um, agricultural, right, raising and keeping of livestock and poultry in, uh, our zoning, in our town as an accessory use and not as a principal use. We have fought a number of issues, fought as in trying to understand how to address, where people have come to us and said they would like to have twelve chickens, twenty-four chickens plus some goats. And Derek has walked them through that they would need a variance to allow two principal uses because the zoning ordinance only allowed us to have, um, agricultural, excuse me, raising and keeping of livestock and poultry in a residential one or residential two districts, which is what came before us as a principal use. Did not speak to it as a necessary use. We found that, um, that the state allowed in the RSA, that if it didn't, if we believe their zoning ordinance didn't adequately cover a situation that we had in front of us, that they encouraged it. We actually found four of the applicants in one case, uh, using that criteria. So we believe that there was essentially a hole. So Derek had said we need a variance to allow two principal uses. We, in that case, made a determination it wasn't a principal use, it's a necessary use. It granted a special exception and bang, we allowed it to happen. But this would actually, uh, make it a necessary use. Uh, why I chose, it doesn't exactly match this table, doesn't exactly match the raising and keeping of livestock and poultry that's identified in the principal uses.
I thought it did.
No, I think I changed it.
I, I, I thought I looked at it and I thought I said, that it didn't, but I could be wrong.
So you, you suggested a special exception in the agricultural and conservancy, open space.
Right, so as a principal use for agriculture?
I have a question.
Raising and keeping of livestock and poultry was a principle in both.
Was permitted.
Conservation, permitted by right.
Yeah.
And I wanted them to come before us in all cases.
So.
Where would, where would this be?
Joanne?
So currently, I just need to get this straight. So currently, in the agricultural district, you can have farm animals with, just by right?
But as a principal use, it's permitted.
That, without a home, you know, no residents there?
That's the part that drives me crazy.
Right.
Is that, why would anyone do that? Of course, they would be living there. Why?
This is trying to address that.
Yes.
So this is addressing a number of things, so.
But.
Go ahead.
But this is allowing you in the agricultural district to have, um, what is it, up to six?
No, uh, those, unless is, is discussion for us.
Oh, okay, so you can have whatever, but you have to come in for a special exception and you're already in the agricultural district. Why would you make farm animals a special exception in the agricultural district?
Um, why I did it is through discussion of that evening is that most of our agricultural areas that have residential use are. What do we call them? It was, uh, I don't know if it's a term, residential.
Residential plant?
Yeah, that's.
The residential plant.
That's what we're looking to do, but it's really.
Yeah, that was, um.
Residential and agricultural area, it really was a, it really wasn't agricultural by having, you know, uh. developments in the agricultural, it's really not agricultural.
I think what we talked about is the major, there's quite a few open space subdivisions with smaller lots in the agricultural district that are not necessarily an agricultural use, but are more of a rural residential.
That's it, rural residential.
And, and I guess my, my feeling is, and I don't know if you want me to provide.
Yeah, absolutely.
Recommendation. In those open space subdivisions where somebody getting, raising livestock and poultry would be, may be considered a nuisance to their abutters or cause a problem. Most of those are reduced property sizes because it's in an open space, it's a cluster subdivision. So the size of the lot shrinks down and at that point, they can't meet the hundred foot setback that's required. And that's where I would say that maybe a, it may be more appropriate to have it permitted in those two districts. And then if somebody can't meet the hundred foot setback, then they need to come in for a variance for the setback and show they meet that.
Or, or maybe it not be permitted in the open space subdivisions and you can put that in the open space section of the ordinance.
Now you're making it a lot more complicated.
Nobody said it was going to be easy.
Right.
I think it, I think by putting it in the open space, thing like Joanne suggested, it, it limits those, the rural areas that would, the rural residential areas. And it keeps the complaints and the nuisances out of there. And it still allows those who have the typical agricultural lots to do it without needing a permit.
I just think, I, and I understand that the, some, some parts of town that are zoned agricultural are really not agricultural. I, I, I get that, but in my heart, I feel like if we, if we're, if we have an agricultural zone and now we're asking for someone to come in for a special exception to raise, you know, chickens or whatever, that it's like, wow, we've really just admitted wholeheartedly that we're not supporting farming like we should be, in, in my opinion. I, I think it's a shame that we don't have, I, I don't know that we have any farms left in town, but I see in the next five years that smaller farms will be coming back. And for them to have to come to this board if they're zoned agricultural, I think, just think that's so sad. Because now we're turning into more of a urban area rather than trying to promote that type of living.
The master plan's quite specific on trying to maintain the agricultural. Flavor of, of the community, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't quite get how if it's permitted in the agricultural districts, why they, why they would have to come in, why, why they would have to come in as an accessory use.
Okay, because I'm not.
I understand that.
I'm not standing here to defend it, I'm just trying to describe what it is.
Right.
So this is not table three dot eleven that I'm adding to, it's three dot twelve.
Right.
Three dot twelve is that the, the primary use is, is residential for three dot twelve, part A.
Yeah.
Right? That the primary use, principal use is accessory to principal residential use. And that, so in addition to having you living there, I'm adding a spot that says raising and keeping of livestock and poultry. In that case, you would come in for a special exception. So if you didn't have a principal residential use, there was an open lot and you were in a R1 district, then you'd fall back to table principal uses, that it is a, that you would have to come in or whatever it says. You know, for R1 district in a, in a table of principal uses, that it is a special exception.
But, and I, just to go back to the whole principle, having the, having your house and having farm animals, I still argue that that is not two separate principal uses. If, if you have a farm, I'm not talking about a slaughterhouse or anything, I'm talking about a true farm. I don't see that as two principal uses. That's your farmhouse and that's your barn.
It's, it's a gray area. It's, it's a gray area that our ordinance does not.
Can't we change that and, and allow farms in town?
Okay, I mean, and that might be a solution, but that, a farm that at that point needs to be defined and it needs to be added to the, the table. I mean, if, if that's, if you prefer to do that, we, I think when Kevin and I talked about this before the planning board, we looked at, are we getting requests for farms?
No.
No, we're getting requests for people who want to get six chickens in their backyard.
Right.
So rather than, rather than, we, we can, but we were trying to address the issue that the zoning board has seen over the last couple of years.
Right, we're trying to address the gaps. So, so, so some of the things in here, you know, in the other, you know, do we need to add farm in the glossary? Because it's not, we don't address what a farm is. Residential use with accessory livestock could be labeled farm unless we created another definition of residential farm. You know, and then will this capture, will this change, capture what you're thinking of that traditional farm is? Somebody wants to come in and has some level of animals and a principal use. I don't know, but as Derek got to, that's not what we've been seeing over the last year. So I did try capture what we've been seeing as an issue and first get to that. Maybe we'll do that this year and then we'll see how would, you know, how does, how do people accept that? What is, what does the town think of it in the vote? Do they like this concept of migrating back to that? Because it's not clear, you know, most people don't see Goffstown as, well, I can't say that, you know, that there's, there's large farms everywhere, it's not what I. And, and I brought up, we brought up this discussion to the planning board, two points. So we brought up the discussion to the planning board, I kept using the term cows, but everybody kept like, I don't know what the hell you're talking about. It was turkeys, boy, people understood houses and turkeys because we used to have turkeys in this town, is I guess, right?
They have them in my backyard now.
I get them in my front yard.
Well, the raising, okay, the raising and maybe even slaughtering of turkeys was done in this town, right? But when I, cows, just pigs and stuff, didn't understand.
I don't know, those turkeys, chickens weren't a big thing.
Turkeys was an example that someone used. So they understood that and they're like, oh yeah, that seems, yeah, I don't know if it does or not. You know, when we started coming to what is our zoning ordinance address? So we looked at this and the other half of that argument was nuisance. How do we control to make ensure we don't create a nuisance? That's, that was specifically brought up. You know, step through this, whatever, but make sure you think about nuisance. So, and how I did that was, well, we, and we talked about, maybe we tear it, you know, okay, maybe we allow it automatically. If somebody comes into certain right conditions, they're going to have six. I don't care, six, good, seven, bad, seven come to us. Now, we could do that. I didn't address that because I think that would be maybe more difficult. So I, I labeled it as anytime that you have a principal uses at your house in these four districts, that you would come before us for any number of animals and, and we would look at numbers, setbacks. And by applying section five point one in the supplemental standards, it, it, it requires a minimum of 10 foot setbacks. I think, is that correct Derek? Section five point one?
For an accessory structure.
Right, so if they were to create a chicken coop or a pen or anything that would be keeping any of this livestock, it would be a minimum of 10 feet. Which is not a lot, it's not the hundred feet, which is what a principal used agricultural for.
Let me tell you about 10 feet. But, and I hear what you're saying with that, but when you get to five point one and you get into that hundred foot setback, and this is one of these little issues that I have about this. I, I feel that the verbiage that's stated in the zoning ordinance, that it only is specific in, in states that it's buildings and farm buildings and agricultural or conservation zones shall be locate no closer than 100 feet to any boundary of a residential district. The reason that it didn't say farm buildings in the agricultural, residential, residential or conservation zones. And why it didn't say residential is because farm buildings weren't allowed in residential. So therefore, it didn't have to be a topic in the, the five point five. But I think we are now looking at it as being part of five point five. And I perhaps don't necessarily feel 100 feet is the amount that needs to be looked at as far as the location of the farm buildings to the boundary of a residential district. But I do feel 10 feet is not adequate. And I do feel that residential was left out of this farm buildings five point five because farm buildings were not allowed in residential, so therefore it was not inserted.
Right before Joanne, I'm going to answer her question on the, I think it can be that they are contemplated because through special exception, you can do raising and keeping of livestock and poultry in a residential one, residential two district. So somewhere, giving the special exception, we would have had to apply because it does say you have to follow section point five point five, so.
Right, but it's the farm buildings.
Yeah, so if we granted it in, in residential one or two, we probably as a special exception would force that 100 foot to apply.
But.
Not automatic though.
And something should be automatic because if you are going to be encouraging the raising of livestock and poultry in residential areas as an accessory use. And with, there's been many that we have, that, that the zoning board has, has agreed that chickens should, should be allowed in the residential areas. That if that is the case, they are going to have to have a farm building. So therefore, you are going to have to address a farm building in a residential area.
And we did, we did it over the one by St. Anselms where we granted the.
Right.
Less than 12, I think is the word we had. And they built a coop that was about 35 feet from the property line.
However, if we are going to now get to be that specific about all the aspects of having farm animals in a residential area, then we, it should not be, in my belief, that it should be the whim of the board to decide whether it's going to be 10 feet or 35 feet or 50 feet or 100 feet. The, the zoning members prior to us and the planning members prior to us felt that it was necessary, necessary to state what the boundaries were going to be for farm buildings in agricultural and conservation zones at that time, that livestock and poultry were, were allowed because they were, they were allowed in those particular zones. Now that we're pulling in residential, we need to make our, I feel we need to make our ordinances specific to an acceptable boundary line that's greater than 10 feet and possibly less than 100 feet. And I think that is an ordinance that we need to put on the ballot this year.
Why I chose section five point one is that it already spoke to accessory uses. I, I'm not saying 10 feet is adequate.
Right.
But I tried to use the zoning ordinance as it was laid out, trying to use what was already existing to not have too many additions.
I, I, I like this approach because I do feel that the approach to the farming issues in, in the town through our ordinances is through the accessory use to a principal use. Especially when we're dealing with them in residential one and residential two. I sit on the fence as far as whether we really needed to, to have a special exception in conservation agricultural. But I, I'm pleased to see that we have identified it as an accessory use and a possible way of permitting it or denying it in residential one, residential two, based upon the, the information that, that has been given to us to review from the meeting of the planning board. I do, in that same context, think that we do need to continue this discussion and we need to go forward with making sure that the boundaries, when the boundaries, when they are in a residential district or abutting a residential district are specifically stated and, and are not, again, are not the whim of, of the board, but are definitely stated as they felt it was necessary to be stated when they created five point five.
Joanne?
I forgot what I was going to say. I was just wondering, when you were, met with the planning board, did they, were they in favor of having farm animals in the residential districts?
I don't know if they said they were in favor.
Were they, were they against it, did they have any?
I don't, I don't think they stated, you know, a favor, in favor for it or against it. I think they recognized based on, in Kevin and Gail's, just talking about that we have seen more applications. I think they also recognized that we talked about, you know, with the salmonella scare with the eggs and, and just the way people are becoming more conscious of where their food comes from, that this could become more of an issue in the future. But I don't think they expressed their opinion.
No.
One way or the other, and they basically said, you know, why don't you propose something that you think is appropriate based on what you're seeing and your expertise and we're looking at it.
Bring it forward in essentially November, I think, is, is when you need to bring it forward to them.
And, and whether you have a residential farm, quote unquote, which is a term that I, that's been stated here, which is a fair term. Whether you have a residential farm or not residential farm, I mean, whether you have a residential farm, farm animals stay in farm buildings. And whether it's a converted garage or not, it has now been converted into a farm building because it houses farm animals and that's why they're called farm buildings. And they have their own characteristics. They have, they have animals that live in them that need to be cleaned. And they have animals that live with them that very possibly emit odors. So therefore, I, I think, I think we're on the right track and that we need to define and put out there for definition what a farm is. I think we need to get out there and, and define what a, maybe two sizes of farms. Maybe we need a residential farm and maybe we need a farm, maybe, and we need a definition of farm buildings. And we also, I think, need to establish what the, once again, the setbacks and the boundaries are going to be of farm buildings on residential properties, against, next to residential properties. And those, and I think that's all within the context of what was discussed at your meeting. I'm sorry, I was on vacation that week and was not able to be there, but. I was watching loons. But anyway, but that, that's, I mean, I, I think we're on the right track and I, I think we have plenty of time to continue this discussion and.
Not sure on the plenty of time, so.
Okay.
The, before I get to the plenty of time, where we're going to go forward from this, back to the planning board quickly. It didn't seem that they were terribly aware that we had this issue, you know, that they brought up. So can't say they're surprised, it was, oh, you had that? Oh, they're like, yeah, this seems to be interesting in agriculture commercial. And I said, we've actually had it, it's in the residential one and residential two. And they're like, oh, really? Oh my gosh, I don't, I didn't know that, you know, so I said, you know, right off my San, San Anselms and, you know, that we've had this. And approved it, by the way, we approved that. So they weren't shocked, they were, and then they just were concerned about the nuisance aspect. That when we, if you do these applications and talking about process doesn't define, say, 35 feet. Obviously, if we apply a special exception criteria, it walks through the process. Walks through, is there a period buffers in place? Is there, would it cause a nuisance? Let's.
See, if you, if, if, excuse me, but if we took that five point five definition and included in it residential zones and we said they could be no closer than 100 foot to any boundary of residential district, then that, if they wanted to have something that was closer than 100 feet, they'd have to come in for a variance.
Yeah, well, you've just, you've just eliminated.
Correct, absolutely. That's right.
By creating 100 foot boundary, what you're doing is eliminating it. You're limiting the number ones that would be more automatic, I guess, if you were to make a, make a.
You're eliminating the residential two district. And I'm, and if, if that's what you want to do, that's fine, but then I don't, is it appropriate to have it as a special exception in the residential two district? Minimum lot size with sewer and water is 10,000 square feet. Minimum lot size without sewer, without water is 40,000 square feet. 200 by 200 foot lot. There's no place on a 200 foot by 200 foot lot you can get 100. There's no place on a two hundred foot by two hundred foot lot you can get a hundred foot setback. So.
So would you think a thirty-five foot setback or a fifty?
I don't know what's, I don't know what's appropriate. And I think that's worth discussing, but a hundred foot setback, I don't think is.
Yeah, 'cause we, we, again, we, that one that we approved was nowhere near a hundred feet. We.
I understand that. I'm just trying to say this could be a simple way to, a simple fix.
So.
But it's illogical.
Let's go, uh, special exception criteria, is it paragraph what?
It's in fifteen point three point two.
Page, yeah, fifteen point three.
So it's on page ninety-six. Bottom left of the book. So the first, it talks to the specific site is appropriate location for such use being consistent with the town's current master plan. So that's a pretty general one. The size or frequency of the use will not significantly alter the character of the neighborhood. So it's a judgment. That's a judgment call. It's not a, uh, that's something we have to judge.
Yeah.
The use will not create a nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians in a manner that cannot be ameliorated. That's a judgment call. But because I didn't believe that would, you know, that's a hard one to apply to, you know, raising or keeping of livestock. That's why I added that pair, or that sentence into section five point five. I was trying to carry the nuisance factor regarding specifically. Um, and I stated raising, keeping of livestock and poultry not creating nuisance to abutters or uses in conducting according to best management practices adopted by the commissioner of agriculture, markets and food, the federal, state laws, regulation rules. That's pulled exactly from the RSA, but I wanted to specifically address that nuisance is applicable, more than just is it a vehicle or pedestrian hazard.
When you pulled that from the RSA, did it say will in it, or did it say shall?
I copied it exactly as it was pulled, and I can read from it.
Yeah, because I'm surprised it didn't say shall, because will and shall are two.
Hang on, hang on, I, I got it, I got it here. I just gotta get the right word. In, in, in my world, they're the same thing.
I understand that, but I think I read someplace at the.
Six seventy-four.
Six seventy-four, what page is that?
Thirty-two, yeah, next there.
Six.
Seven, four seventy-one.
So page four seventy-one.
Yeah, it continues on the next page.
Well, I pulled it from six seventy, thirty-two A, the presumption. So it's, uses the word shall here. They shall be deemed to be permitted there.
Shall.
But I, I use the words will.
I, I think you need to use the word shall.
I think.
And I think, and would, would this be something that Attorney Drescher would look at before?
We, we could definitely consult with him. I think it would be most important for you to come up with a concept, you know, setback issues, those kind of things, and
Okay.
some of those legalese. And, and I would suggest that for five point five, you look at the home occupation under five twelve.
Yeah.
Which is on page twenty-seven. If you look at five point twelve point one, the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and subordinate to the use of the dwelling unit as a residence. You know, the accessory keeping of livestock and poultry. And then the next one, it's conducted by the resident of the premises and shall not degrade and adversely affect or undermine the residential character of the building. So I think that you might be able to steal some language from there as well.
Okay. Okay, so that's, and then what else we have on the special exception? So we talk about nuisance and hazard. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for adequate and appropriate facilities for the proper operation of the use. So you talk about size.
Well, that's where you get into the buffers.
And the next one is buffers. The proposed location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent property. So all these things are judgment calls. And so how I wrote it was, it would come before us and we would look at the facts and circumstances. How dense is the specific neighborhood are we talking about? Um, what else is around it? Like, we'd look at invariances. Because not all neighborhoods are the same. We look at the buffers. So we could say, well, we can allow this one to be closer to the property line because they got a little more buffer, you know. So I let the, I let us have more, um, allowance, I guess, or.
But I, I, I feel that if we do not, if we are not specific on what our buffers are going to be, that we are going to enter into a legal argument as to whether they should be a hundred or whether they should be ten. Because those are the only two buffers that are mentioned in the zoning ordinances. So I think you open up that window of, of, of possible appeals because of every, there, there are always two lawyers, one on one side and one on the other. And one, one could use that as an argument. If you don't have a specific buffer stated as what you are going to have when you are encouraging agricultural uses in residential zoned areas, which have not been particularly, um, addressed as, as being acceptable in, in what we're saying by, um, stating that they could possibly come in for a special exception. We're, we're giving them direction to go, but we're, I think we're leading ourselves wide open for appeals by not being specific on the buffer.
So the last thing, you, you talked about process and time. So if we were to present this to the planning board in November, we have one more meeting to discuss and essentially come to a consensus of this we wanna put together. But between now and then, someone's gotta put all this together. So who's the we?
Look at, look at the great job. We did.
I'm just saying, who's the we? And putting these concepts on paper.
Do we wanna have a special meeting, uh, separate?
Your schedule, come on, we're.
You're the one that's having the wedding.
I'd, I'd be willing to work with anybody to, to come up with something. I would just ask for some direction. And if, if it's simply just come up with wording about nuisance, best management practices, I think that's, that's simple to do. My question would be on, at the November meeting, do you wanna talk to setbacks? And do you wanna talk to, where is it, is it permitted in any district? Is it special exception? Those would be the issues I think is most appropriate for you to discuss. I think I could come up with some language, expand a little bit on what Kevin's provided here.
And, and what about definitions of farm and residential farm and farm building?
I think we can look to other ordinances
Okay.
to get an idea of, um, to what is out there and glean some of the information there.
And Hook's it. You allowed chickens. Do you, what is your setback in residential for, for livestock?
We don't have any rules in our ordinance about animals. So according to the state law. I can't talk very loud tonight. Um, we don't have any rules in our ordinance about animals. So, um, they're just allowed wherever. That's according to the state law. If you don't have any rules, then they can go wherever. But I know Bo had, because we were thinking about doing it last year and then the planning board decided not to, but I know Bo has a pretty in-depth ordinance on.
And I, and I think it was not last year, but the year before, Steve Griffin did work about coming up with a, a table. If you've got this many chickens, you need this much space. And if you've got this many horses, you need this much space and this much setback. And that, that went down at the public hearings before the planning board. You know, a lot of people came out and were very against that, was my recollection.
Well, I would think that, that there is a, a mention of a hundred foot setback. Um, and I think there is a good argument there that somebody could say, which I just said, the reason residential wasn't put in there because it wasn't and a use in residential, that people who are in the residential zone property would be probably in favor of having, um, a, a, a boundary put, a buffer put in that was less than a hundred feet. Because it would be, again, encouraging livestock in an R two, which a hundred foot, like you said, could not accommodate. So it would address one of the most important things, I feel, as far as resident, farm, residential farms is, is what that buffer's going to be.
But I guess the key question is, do we want to encourage livestock in R two? I'm not so sure that we do, or that we should.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a reason for all the different zones. If someone like that person on St. A's, I think that was R two, they came in, they came in for, was it a variance?
Variance, yeah.
And they explained, you know, well, we're gonna have just so many. It's just for our use and blah, blah, blah. And, and it seemed like it was a good fit. But I don't know that we wanna promote it for R two. It's not, I don't know that it's appropriate.
Is R two mostly down, um?
Is it, do we have?
Pinnardville.
Is it basically, oh, Pinnardville area?
The Pinnardville section?
Where I'm at.
Yeah.
This dark olive color here is your R two.
So that's most of Pinnardville?
Most of Pinnardville.
That's a good point, Joanne.
So one thing we learned, or I learned, I'll take it that, at the planning board meeting, that was pointed out, um, in reference to the junkyard discussion, but that our zoning ordinance is not a, uh, what is it, a prohibitive?
It is not a prohibitive. It's not a restrictive, it's permissive.
It's a permissive ordinance, which everybody's shaking their head like they know what that is, and I, yeah. But is, if it's not listed in there, it's not allowed. So you go from the premise that you can't just do anything. It's gotta, you gotta be allowed to do it. So in this case, if we dashed marked through RSBO one, two, all these others, it's not just, oh, I need to go back and get a variance. It's, it's truly telling you it's not allowed.
But you could.
You always have that avenue, right?
Right. That's what a variance is for.
But the people have spoken. The people say it's not allowed. So again, back to process. So Derek has volunteered to help whoever is willing to put this together. Who may that willing be, person be? Kathy, would you want to help put?
Sure.
Ordinance to paper?
It would be one of those things where we just, I'd just come in and we'd sit down with paper and we'd get stuff together and we, we could draft something. If, and, and I wanna feel comfortable about this, and, and I, both Derek and I wanna feel comfortable, is that what we're looking at is, is the five point five, the three point twelve accessory uses, the five point five, and definitions?
Yeah, so, you know, I had these things at the bottom that are like questions, you know. You know, talking about setbacks, if they were sufficient, if we wanna limiting, if, if we wanna write in any limits to numbers of animals, that's up to us. There could be other things that, you know, they talked, we mentioned that night, you know, horses and, you know, we talked about any type of animals. We, we get fixated on chickens, so think about, I guess, if there's any other.
Llamas.
You know, uses, but. Uh, you know, it's written as raising and keeping of livestock and poultry, so it's more than just chickens. Um, and then definitions.
Now, in a recent application, both livestock and poultry were mentioned in the application as to what the applicant was going for in a residentially zoned area. And there was some concern that the board had that they didn't want to split the application and allow chickens versus livestock. Because since the application included both, they felt they should rule on them as an entity and not individually. So.
Which, both of those animals are covered under this one item.
Correct, correct. So I, oh, so if anybody just wanted to come in, so if somebody just wanted to come in for poultry, they would just come in under poultry. So is that is that, that's the way that we're going to look at when these issues come in? Not to segregate the application, not to divide the application, but keep it as the entity of the application?
I, I would say yes, that would be the way to handle that. If it comes in as, as both, you handle it as both. I can't see it really coming in as
Too individual.
as too individual. And, uh, for, and, and or.
Right.
I'm coming in to request permission to raise chickens and maybe goats or goats and no chickens or llamas or.
Turkeys.
But I think it would be appropriate if somebody came in with that request. You could say, yeah, based on your proposal, the chickens are fine, but the livestock, no. You know, I, I don't know what you've done in the past because I think that, that particular meeting I was not at. But I, I think you could, because you have the power to make such order decision as ought to be made, you know, within reason. If, if it's, if it's notice for chickens and some type of livestock.
We can approve one and deny the other?
I think that's, yeah.
Oh, well.
I'm not saying you have to. I'm not, you know, if, and if, if you wanna treat them either as a board or individually, say it's a whole package or nothing, that's really up to you. But I don't think, I, I don't think there's a problem with you, uh, splitting them up if you think the impact of one versus both is different.
And we've done stuff like that, I think.
If the applicant comes in and says.
If the applicant says, I want it all or nothing, then.
Then you'd hold on it as it's, your decision is based on all or nothing.
Yeah, just kinda like the one versus five foot sign thing. Kinda threw out there, hey, there's a five foot sign. He said.
Yeah, basically, he said, this is the way, this is what we're looking for. Yeah, this is what I want.
You decide based on what they are asking.
What they're asking.
Okay, so Kathy, between now and the November third meeting, we'll work with Derek to come up with something. Can, and if we can send it out ahead of time, that'd be awesome for review.
Yep.
And take a look at that, because at that November meeting.
Shoot me an email. I'll, I'll, I'll sit down on that and give you a hand too on that. I'd be willing to.
No more than two, though, right?
Two's, two's fine.
Three's great because then we don't, then we have the.
Three's a quorum.
Three is a quorum.
So.
Well, not, well, he's not, yeah.
I know, but more than two, that's what I'm saying, more than two.
Derek doesn't count.
He's not a.
He's the most important, I mean.
Board member.
So I'm just saying, but I think if you wanna, yeah, two's great.
Okay, well, we'll, um.
I'll leave, I'll leave tomorrow and we'll figure out something.
Yep.
All right, well, thank you for Thursday and Monday.
Well, this, this, somebody asked me the other day when I was, when I was out and I, I was sitting and talking with some people and it was, it was kinda interesting because they said to me, what, as a zoning member, what do you think are the major issues that the zoning board needs to address in the town? And right off the top of my head, I said farming.
Yeah.
And I had no idea was discussed at the planning board. And I had no idea that anything was, what, what had been discussed at the planning board until I read your synopsis. And I'm glad to see that that is what we're paying attention to. Because I do feel that it is, as Joanne feels and Hook's that, that, um, and here, that, that it is a sign of the times.
If I hadn't gone, Derek was gonna speak. Um, he had, he was gonna speak, and he had another issue that he spoke to the zoning.
Oh, there was the question about when an application comes in that will require site plan review or requires commercial or industrial use. Is the requirement that it goes to the planning board for review and comment? And there have been many applications where they have not taken advantage of that. So I asked, do you wanna take that out? And what we discovered was, it's probably better to change our process of how we bring it to them. Rather than saying, do you think this is a good project? Or should a variance be granted of? Rather than that, more ask the question, why is this restriction that this person's asking for a variance from? Why did you include this restriction in the zoning ordinance? Or, you know, those kind of questions, more, more general.
Speaking to the spirit of the ordinance.
Exactly, so, so the planning board has an opportunity to express to the zoning board why those particular restrictions are there.
Which seemed very reasonable, like, that, yeah, that is what we wanna hear is, what does the zoning ordinance mean?
Yeah, you don't want them to tell you, grant the variance, don't grant the variance.
Doesn't mean anything.
Yeah.
You almost get defensive on that.
And didn't Jim Raymond get kind of, I was reading over this, he goes kind of, um, hedging on it because it, um, it put the planning board in, in a, in a unusual position?
It does put them in a unusual position, and I, and I suggest to that as well, that is there a problem? Does it put a conflict of interest if that applicant then returns to planning board? And that's where I think we came up with a solution to change the process that SAP has to bring it to them rather than completely remove it from the ordinance, because they felt it was still important to have it in there.
And it, it, it's a little bit bothersome to me, only because, you know, if they are going to comment on something, it, it does, it, it, it does make a difference whether you put the feather in the cap or not, kind of, kind of thing. Because if, if, and you're asking them to comment on zoning board issues, maybe, that, it's kind of a gray issue.
It is, and that's where I think what was kind of decided, and it, it's going to be one of those ever-evolving things that we'll see as the applications come in, see how it works.
Did you also want to address the issue of alternates or talking?
During deliberation?
Yes.
You, you still have my copy there?
I do, and I will give it back to you in just a second. This is, uh, Senate Bill four forty-eight, which was approved July sixth, two thousand and ten.
Oh, this year.
And is effective this year.
Oh, okay.
And what it requires is, what had previously been my advice, which came from the Office of Energy of Planning, was alternates should not be participating in the deliberative portion. Because you need to make it clear to that applicant of who is sitting on the application. And is that non-voting person, are they swaying, or are they persuading someone who is voting? And the Office of Energy and Planning had always advised that an alternate not voting should step down from the deliberative portion to participate fully during the public hearing. And then, but it had never been decided, it was always a question that municipal attorneys fought about. Well, this year, the legislature made a change to the law and said, alternates can participate in the deliberative session, provided it is, that's how it's written in your rules of procedure. They basically said, your rules of procedure should deal with how alternates will act in the deliberative session on an application.
Do we have that in our rules?
We do not, we do not.
So then that begs the, that we don't have a policy, and so without a policy, it's.
Without a policy, I, I mean, ma- ma- it's something, any change to the rules of procedure, you have to, we have to post as part of the rules of procedure. So I can post it for the next meeting, but that issue would be discussed, um, and you can discuss it there. And I don't know if people have a feeling strongly one way or another. Again.
I, I think, well, I'm not sure which way I am more strongly leaning towards, but I think, I think the, even a non-voting person could have some very good input to a discussion. And I think at the same time, it could be made clear to the applicant or whoever's listening that even though the alternates or whomever are not voting, they are still allowed to, to deliberate with us and point out that, you know, who the voting members are, just make those specific steps.
I think sometimes we might have an, an instance where we have an alternate that set, was at the meeting and a prior meeting that was continued, and then the full membership is here. And for instance, tonight, I mean, Joanne excused, recused herself, or excused herself because she, she hadn't read the minutes and wasn't knowledgeable on, on the case of the, the application. And yet, um, she didn't necessarily have to do that. And even if she had read the minutes, she still may have not captured the feeling of the meeting before, which the alternate was here for before. And therefore could add to the deliberation discussion with the knowledge, the total picture of the whole issue from being present at both meetings versus the member that was only present at one meeting. And, and I, I think we, I'm in, I, I think it's very obvious that I'm in favor of, of letting alternates, anybody who is on the board, and I think we learn by discussion. And, and I, I, I'm kind of in favor of letting the alternates discuss during deliberations with the applicants realizing that they're not a voting member.
Do we decide tonight, or we make it an item for discussion?
No, I would say it'd be appropriate to make it an item for discussion, and I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, let's do that.
Okay. And we'll vote on it, then it's.
If you have any more, any other information on it, just, you know, this is really good.
Okay, and then there was two things in the folder, one that we've talked about earlier, that on Saturday, November thirteenth, is the annual fall planning and zoning conference. The town does pay for you to go, and it's very worthwhile, I've gone to almost every one of these. And then their other pamphlet is the New Hampshire Local Government Center's sixty-ninth annual conference from November seventeenth through nineteen.
I have a question. Derek, did we, we touched upon, you know, talking about a budget for the zoning board? And I know we had talked about it, it was always been incorporated with the planning board.
Yep.
Did we get to any resolution on this, as to whether or not we're going to know what is budgeted for the zoning board unto itself?
I, I can email you what we as staff proposed for the zoning board and planning board for training purposes. And I can provide you with that information. It then goes to the town administrator that makes changes and then brings that to the Board of Selectmen.
And when do you have to have the budget to?
We had, we had the budget to the town administrator in August.
And have you presented it to the?
The, the Board of Selectmen is still considering their, the town's budget, so.
So we still have, okay.
There, there may not be time for you to.
This year.
To change, but, and, but what we've done is, we've gone off of usage, basically, as far as training. We have adjusted training a little bit, um, in the past couple of years to try and have enough funds there for the law lecture series and the spring and fall conferences. And to be honest, the zoning board has been the only board that's really used, made use of those funds in the last couple of years. And we've had enough money to, to provide that training.
We haven't run out of money, as I'm aware of, have we?
Correct, and if there was a year that we were close, we have, um, talked with administration about, you know, we've, we've, we've made it work.
They had an issue with, with me going to something one time, and, and Derek brought it to the powers that are to be, the decision makers, and they absolutely said they were going to pay for it. And, I mean, it was, everybody's got a budget and everybody's, you know, tightening their belts. I thank them very much for supporting my training.
See, if we don't have a budget, then we don't have to abide by the push of, you need to reduce your budget by, what was it? You don't have to come forward with a plan of reducing it by ten percent or fifteen percent, so if you don't have one, it's all good.
And I, I think what might be more appropriate is, rather than bring a budget and say, this is what we're proposing, which I'm, I can, I will do. But if, is, is there a training that you're not pursuing now that you'd like to pursue in the future? I guess that would be the question I would ask. And I'm not looking for an answer now, but is there some type of training that you would prefer? That you're not taking advantage of now?
Good question, okay.
And again, I'm not, don't need an answer now, but something to think about. I think that's, that's from, for, for my standpoint, is more.
Can you give me some suggestions of things that I'm not doing?
No, because the town has to pay for it, right? It's all about belt tightening, not a span thing, right? Okay, that's all that is on the agenda, any?
I make a motion to adjourn?
In discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening.